I'd like to call the Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council to order. Ms. Manning, you call the role?
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Debona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan. Chairman McCarthy.
Present.
Eight members, you have a qualm.
Thank you. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council will be convening again via remote conferencing services that'll air on QA TV, Channel 9, on Wednesday, May 26 at 7:30 PM, relative to any and all matters pending in this committee, including but not limited to 2021-038 appropriation of $475 million to fund all or a portion of the unfunded pension liability of the retirement system of the city of Quincy. Also pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Good evening, everybody. We have another very important item on the agenda tonight that I want to make sure we ask all the right questions and go through, you know, the due diligence of this. I'd like due diligence of this. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Walker for some opening comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, councilors, and thank you for giving me the opportunity on behalf of Mayor Koch to introduce tonight's presentation. Presenting tonight will be Director of Municipal Finance Eric Mason. Rick Kosha from our Municipal Finance Department, joined the department after 20 years in the private sector investment banking world for some of the largest institutional investment banks, places like JP Morgan, Fidelity, Eaton Vance. And Senator McNerney, who you all know as our bond advisor, she'll be talking about the city's credit status and its rating. As I mentioned, the Munify team will get into greater detail in the specifics, but I wanted to provide a broad overview of the highlights of what is before the body tonight. Borrowing, taking out a pension obligation bond to finance the city's pension outstanding unfunded pension liability was first conceived going back as far as 2006 by then-city council or now-state senator John Keenan. At that time, the council passed the Home Rule petition and it was approved at the state level that would allow the city to do that. Counselor Keenan and the council at that time, they didn't advocate to do it right away. It was all about the premise of doing it, you know, anticipating that the time may come where it would make sense to pull the trigger on something like this. That time is now, based on what we've seen as truly historically low interest rates. A couple of things I want to make clear before we get into the nuts and bolts of the presentation with our team. This is not a new obligation. It's refinancing one we already have. I know this is a big number that's before you tonight, but we really want to emphasize that this is money that the city already owes and we pay every year under a budget appropriation. What's before you tonight, in the end, is simply changing the way we pay for that obligation and changing it in a way we think is going to save substantial amount of taxpayer money and add a great measure of predictability and stability to the budgeting process and the benefit of local taxpayers. But there are risks. No one on the team tonight, nor the mayor or anyone else involved in this process is going to tell you that there aren't any. The team is going to get into very explicit detail tonight on what those risks are, but at the end of the day, the mayor believes strongly, the team believes strongly, that the potential benefits far outweigh those risks. Always keeping in mind that the risks that the team will talk a little bit about tonight, talk a lot about tonight, are enhanced under the system that we use today when we pay out unfunded liability every year through a budget appropriation that have largely the same kinds of risks. Finally, I want to make clear that there's no question that appropriation of this kind will require more robust engagement between the city and the retirement board. As this body well knows, the retirement board is not a department of the city. It is an independent authority. But that being said, anything to this level is clearly going to require a level of oversight and engagement and a relationship between the two entities. And the mayor has spoken to each of the board members about this and there's broad agreement that that's exactly what needs to happen. This comes in a couple of different forms. First, also before you, although not on the agenda this evening, is special legislation that would add two members to the retirement board. One, the designee of the city's Director of Municipal Finance, and another specifically drawn from the private investment banking financial sector world. But beyond that, there's just a baseline understanding that regardless of the fate of the special legislation that the city puts forward, that there's going to be active involvement from the city team and the retirement board as we move forward on this process. With that, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. With that, yes, Mr. Mason, we'll have you lead off and good evening, Eric.
Good evening, Chairman. It's okay with the committee, I'm going to put up a presentation on the separate screen. So, good evening, council. So, as Chief of Staff Chris Walker pre-alluded to, today we're going to be discussing pension obligation bonds. I'd like to begin with an oversight of what really is outlined in the request for pension obligation bonds. In particular, I want to talk about not just the risks, not just rewards, but the overall process, and I would like to contextualize what we're discussing here. This is not a new obligation, as Chris Walker said. This is not the obligation that was at the behest of this administration or of this council. This is really the product of 100 years of pension structure, not just throughout the Commonwealth, but throughout the United States. And the reason this is in front of this body today is because we are experiencing an interest rate environment that is the lowest it's ever been. We, this environment we're in right now is really unprecedented in terms of what high-quality market rate bonds are getting. And we do have, we have Senator from Hilltop who will be talking, I'm sure she can get to more of the market details than I, but the rates we're seeing right now are so low that they are creating this environment where pension obligation bonds become a great tool to reduce tax liability based by the taxpayers, which, as this body does its due diligence every fall in trying to lower that rate, just provides a powerful tool. In the most direct sense, what we're doing, what is being proposed today, is the refinancing of the liability, much like refinancing a house. The current interest rate, our unfunded liability, is 7.25%, but the market will let us approach a rate of 3% or even lower in a lot of cases. So, to look at this action, it's not a new obligation. It's not a new liability. It is the exchange of interest rates in its most pure sense. And this action, as I alluded to, will provide substantial relief to what would be the potential increase in tax bills relative to the unfunded pension liability, not just in this year, but in all the subsequent years following this decision if the council chooses this approval. So, in talking about interest rates, I do want to show that this data is from the Federal Reserve Economic Database, which is a leading authority in macroeconomic statistics. It is what every chairman of the Federal Reserve has looked over, and it's what every chairman of every individual Federal Reserve Bank observes. This is the macroeconomic data. And what it shows us very clearly is that this is the lowest interest rate that some economists thought would never be possible. This data you're looking at covers all corporate bond spot prices from 1984 to today for AAA, AA, and single A bond issuances. The city of Quincy, being a public entity, usually scores, even on our tax bill notes, more than 1% below what this chart is showing. This would be the interest rate we'd be exchanging for the current 7.25% interest rate that exists on the nonperforming pension liability. To speak upon this in direct terms for the city of Quincy, we have an interest paid comparison. On the current plan, the roughly $450 to $475 million pension obligation, unfunded pension obligation, would mean we pay over a quarter of a billion dollars in debt in just in interest over the next 17 years. As you can see through these different scenarios, regardless of if it's, our goal is to get a 30-year note for this, but even in the event that administrative finance for the Commonwealth requires a 20, 30, or equal to term bond, the math is clear. We save money with this plan. We save interest expense, even over an increased duration. So, I'd like to, what I'd like to also present to the council, it's kind of an understanding of the inner workings of what a pension obligation bond is. As I said in the first slide, it's a refinancing action, it's not a new obligation. What a pension obligation bond, in the most direct terms, is, is an obligation, is when an entity, usually a public entity, issues bonds and replaces one form of what we call internal debt. That's the unfunded liability that the city owes, without question, to former workers that bears a relatively high interest rate, in this case, 7.25%, with a much lower rate of bonds sold in public markets. That's the crux there, is that we are exchanging one form of debt for a much lower rate, similar to refinancing your house. You buy your house at, say, $200,000, which I know is a ludicrously low price for this market. You pay it off, you're down to $100,000. When you refinance the house, you don't take another $200,000. You're refinancing $100,000. You just took it at a much lower rate. Budget implications, which always translate to tax implications. Right now, the budget that was brought forth to you by the mayor, you'll see that there's $7.5 million in normal costs maintained in the appropriation. There's no option to refinance this debt. There, I shouldn't, sorry, excuse me, not debt. There's no option to refinance this appropriation. This is the cost incurred to the pension between hirings and other early retirement incentives and other programs that do not fund the pretense of the unfunded liability. They must be appropriated for and must be paid on a yearly basis. You also see $9.5 million in anticipated first-year debt service payment. That is good under the pretense that the body approves the pension obligation bond. If it chooses not to, we'll move back in front of you with an appropriation to directly fund the pension obligation, and it will be about three times that net worth. But you'll see another $5.5 million that is being put into our budgetary reserves or stabilization fund in order to reflect some of the increased debt costs that will occur next year. This debt cost will not exceed what the unfunded liability would be. This is done for a practical budgeting purpose so that we do not experience a substantial tax levy shortfall or structural deficit incurred because of this action. If the POB does not, if the POB was to not be deliberated on and not pass relative to the budget, it would be expected to increase the total appropriation that you see now for fiscal year 2022. It would increase by additional 14 million, roughly 3.5%. In order to graphically show what the difference between the current unfunded liability, which is, in accounting terms, called UAL, this is what the payment schedule looks like for addressing our unfunded liability versus 30-year pension obligation bonds. As you can see, it's quite a dramatic escalation. In fact, our last two-year payments total $128 million, or 66 million in FY 2036, and 62 million in FY 2037. These will be, by the time they're, these will outpace relative to the FY 22 budget, what we even pay for health insurance. It will be the largest single non-education obligation in our budget by that year. It's also the single fastest-growing expense within the budget. Netting almost a $3 million increase year-over-year for the last 10 years is projected to average over a $4 million increase every year, which is over $100 to the single-family tax rate as we go forward until the funding schedule is paid. The current interest rate environment is something I do want to discuss because it's paramount to the understanding of the risk associated with this. So, I want to be very clear, when I talk about historical rates, I talk about, what I'm saying is that we are below the 5% top for interest rates, which means throughout the entire history of the United States, 95% of the time, rates were higher. We are, as many constituents and certainly members of the city council are aware, if you look at mortgage rates right now, they're the lowest they can be. Even two years ago, when my wife and I bought our house, I was like, wow, these rates can't get any lower, and I was sadly mistaken. It was already financially prudent enough to refinance even two years later, which I think may be the only time in the US history that's occurred. We're experiencing those same type of interest rate benefits right now, and the city can take advantage of these and address a long-term obligation that will present budgetary and single-family tax bill pressure over the next 20-plus years. More important is that interest rates, by every measure, are going to increase. This is simply something that happens after we have any sort of economic contraction. The US experienced in the fourth quarter of last year, in the second, between the second and fourth quarter of last year, the most violent economic contraction that's ever been seen in the United States. All the data points very simply to interest rates will climb. Inflation is going up. The Federal Reserve is targeting higher inflation. The Treasury is targeting higher inflation, and the amount of deficit spending and borrowing that occurred during the pandemic will result in higher interest. That is not the opinion of Eric Mason, the economist, that is the opinion of macroeconomics for the last 100 years. So, the opportunity we have now is unique and it is fleeting. As, it's important to remember that as we are experiencing inflation, many more people are getting back to work. The more people get back to work, more likely inflation is going to continue to increase. In order to do a side-by-side comparison of the savings, I want to express them in two choices. One is the current choice. We have 450, $475 million in an obligation that we must pay. For all intents and purposes, it is no different than debt. It has an interest rate of 7.25% and has a term of 17 years, and it has a ballooning payment. So, we will pay, if we do not approve this, in 2022, $30.8 million, and by 2036, it'll be $62.9 million. The other option, which is before this body, is the pension obligation bond. Same value, much lower interest rate for an extended term. It offers much lower year-over-year costs, and it also offers a net lower cost in interest. I equate this slide to when you presented a mortgage. You can choose the 15-year, the 20-year, the 30-year. You can choose an ARM, or you can choose a fixed. Right now, for all intents and purposes, we have a short-term ARM mortgage, and we're trying to adjust for a rate mortgage, and we're converting it to a much more stable and fiduciarily able to be projected and budgeted for 30-year fixed mortgage. That is what's before us, it's expressed in this chart, and I'm sure I'm going to have to take questions on that as we go, as we conclude these presentations. I do want to turn it over to Mr. Kosha in my office, who will be discussing what some other communities have done, and you'll also be discussing some risk factors.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, councilors. Well, first off, I just want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak tonight, and as Eric mentioned, if you have any questions, please feel free to kind of interject them during the presentation. Secondly, my presentation is going to be a little bit different. Eric's section was a bit more quantitative in nature than mine will be. Mine will be more qualitative, talking about the state of the current market and why so many communities are looking to take advantage of the current low-interest rates environment by issuing pension obligation bonds. You know, suffice to say, I think Eric alluded to it a little bit, Quincy's not alone in exploring this opportunity. You know, this first slide lists some of the current communities that have either passed legislation allowing them to issue the bonds or those that are in the bold, that are in the process. And as you can see, Andover is seeking authorization to issue $180 million this June. I think they go before the council fairly soon. Brockton issued a $100 million pension obligation bond in 2005. They're actually seeking authorization to issue another one for $325 million, $325 million pension obligation bond this fall. I've had extensive conversations with retirement boards, or former retirement board members in both those towns, and, you know, basically, the feedback that I got from them was, you know, we were ahead of the game. After 2008, which everyone knows what occurred in 2008, we've been ahead of the game, that's why they're going to market again. Drake did a small one. I added a couple non-Massachusetts communities here for a couple of reasons. One, they're sister states, and two, they have large plans, large authorizations going forward that are currently in the news. Like I said, this Providence, Rhode Island came out, they're going to be seeking authorization for a $704 million pension obligation bond this year. Go to the next slide, Eric. So, you know, what are some of the pros and why are the reasons a lot of communities are looking at doing pension obligation bonds during this climate? Well, you know, I harken back to some of the statements the mayor made in his presentation a couple of weeks ago, when he was talking about, when, the first thing he does when he's looking at putting the budget together every year, he looks at two things, right? He looks at the pension and healthcare costs. Why? Well, they eat up a significant amount of the budget. As Eric mentioned, if we don't issue the pension obligation bond going forward, we're looking at a fiscal year 2022 of about $31 million. For fiscal year 2021, the appropriation was $32 million, and those liabilities are projected to escalate even further. You know, liability costs are projected to grow 2.5% times normal costs from now through fiscal year 2036. The third bullet, budgetary certainty, level debt service payments, et cetera. I think Eric spoke a little bit about that in this section, so I won't belabor the point, but, you know, going to a pension obligation bond, leveled debt service allows for easier budgetary planning, obviously. Like I said, when you're not having to factor in or try to figure out how much, how large appropriation you're going to make for pensions and/or healthcare. It provides more flexibility, obviously, if you know exactly what your debt level of service is going to be for that pension payment every year. And that flexibility, you're allowed, you can dedicate in that appropriation to other resources, right? So, either to tax relief, to other, to better services for the constituents, and ultimately to better the lives of the city constituents. The fourth budget, budgetary outlays, higher probability that outlays to pension costs will be lower under a pension obligation bond program. That's, you know, that's fairly obvious. The city is essentially, right now, borrowing at a rate of 7.25% for its pension system, when it could be potentially financing at 3% and sub 3%. Next slide, Eric. Some additional kind of reasons why a lot of communities are looking at them. I think Eric did a nice job in terms of comparing and contrasting the potential savings from moving to the current amortization schedule we're currently on to a leveled debt service at a much lower interest rate. You know, even if we were to achieve that 7.25% assumed rate of return for the portfolio or for the pension, anything over 3% will still show significant savings. The difference between that bond rate and the return that is generated from their investments, that difference in return versus the bond rate equates to more freed-up appropriations. Another benefit is the pension plan is fully funded. Why is that important? Well, one, it's state mandated, the plan needs to be fully funded by 2037, and it ultimately stabilizes and sustains the pension. So, you know, ratings agencies look at that, that's a big part of it. How, you know, we're currently at 45%, and that is, that's as a 2018 funding ratios. It's actually lower than that, and when you compare that to other communities, it is on the lower end, it's actually below the median of all Massachusetts plans, retirement plans. Next slide, Eric. The risks associated with it. There are risks associated, you know, and no one can tell you there isn't, but not all risks are the same. I think Eric gets sick of hearing me say this, but there are, all investment risk is not the same. The risk can be mitigated and managed with different strategies, and not to get too wonky on you, but, you know, one way would be to create a contingent reserve fund to protect it against any market downturn. Dollar-cost averaging into the market during that period, not necessarily going in all at once, but doing it, all that means is investing that money in tranches so that you would avoid any large downturn in the market for the total value. Bond payments do become fixed, that's essentially what you're doing. You're trading a flexible schedule to a fixed debt schedule. But, in reality, it's still an obligation that the city is required to fill, whether you do the pension obligation bond or not. The second bullet, pension obligation bond insurance issuances need to be part of a plan to address pension funding shortfalls, shortfalls due to investment. You know, this is more of a, something to be aware of or planned for as opposed to a specific risk, but it is part of our plan to have those conversations on how to, you know, get better investment returns. And lastly, I think, you know, the margin for error in terms of the pension meeting its objective is a lot wider when you're looking at borrowing costs at sub 3%, you know, as opposed to 7.25%, which, you know, makes, which is why now is a really compelling time to do so. Next slide, Eric. That may be it. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have as it relates to this.
I do, excuse me, Rick, I do want to talk a little bit more about consideration of threats.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
And when we, when we do discuss that, Rick did a good job covering all of them, and there's certainly, for somebody of Rick's background, the understanding of systematic exchange, especially within a portfolio, is very important. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the threats that may be more common and more pressing relative to the situation we're in now. Some of the threats to also consider on top of what Rick mentioned is if we experience a short-term contraction in the market. Stock growth has been consistent over time, and has been consistent greater than 3%. There will be ups and downs. There's certainly no getting around that. If I could predict every up and predict every down, probably in a different job, probably on my own island. We call this systematic risk, and it is very likely that systematic risk would affect us regardless if we did this. It would hurt, if we were just following the current course, it would still hurt us. If we didn't follow this course and we went in the direction of pension obligation bonds, we are no more reducing or increasing that systematic risk. If the market contracts 30%, it's going to hurt us. The pension obligation bonds do not materially change that risk portfolio when it comes to unfunded liability any different than just holding the ULLs as they are now. The only difference is a higher budgetary impact for the taxpayers. Strengths. Some of the strengths I want to talk, I want to talk about of doing this and being covered by Rick in certainly a more direct manner, is that this does provide a forecastable shield through single-family tax bills against that future UALL or unfunded pension liability chart that you saw. We are exploiting, like I mentioned earlier, we are exploiting incredibly low interest rates that are unlikely to stick around very, very long, very much longer. This is the fastest-growing expense in the budget, and with stabilizing this expense becomes more stability within the budget and a better ability to predict the impacts of financial decisions on the taxpayer. The Fed and Secretary of Treasury are targeting a 2% inflation. The only reason inflation hasn't, in the long run, hit that yet is because we're still dealing with several million Americans being unemployed. Once that happens, according to the FELT model, according to many Nobel Prize-winning models, that will cause more inflation. The higher the inflation value, if this is addressed now, means the net present value or the future value of those dollars that we have to pay throughout this note are going to decrease. So, we take advantage of it now, we can be assisted by that inflation in asset prices over time. And finally, it takes the largest obligation the city has, and it permanently stabilizes it, again, strongly supporting the ability to properly project and forecast budgets over time. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Senator from Hilltop, and I'm going to leave this slide. Um, and I'm going to leave this slide of it. Uh, actually, I will pull back the screen share um to give Cinder center stage. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Eric and Rick, uh, for the presentation. Uh, it's nice that we're in a predicament like this, which is a good predicament to look at. You know, the way I look at it, Quincy's in a in a very good position. Uh, before we open it up for comments, I'd like Cinder McNerney to um chime in on her thoughts so we can have her thoughts. And then um I'll open it up to my colleagues for questions, to Cinder, to Rick, to Eric. Um, and um, want to make sure we ask as many questions as possible. There's a lot to swallow. I'm not looking for any vote tonight. I want to have another meeting. I want to make sure everybody gets their questions answered uh because it's another big move for the city. Um, so with that, I'll send her, I'll turn it over to you and thank you for being with us tonight.
Thanks for having me. Um, I just wanted to um highlight a couple of things about the city's credit. Um, the city was in the bond market today uh and sold twenty-four million dollars of bonds at for twenty-five-year debt at a one seventy-seven, one point seven seven percent. Um, and they also were in the bond uh note market today, sold one-year notes for about, I think it was sixty-some-odd million at ten basis points, one tenth of one percent. So those were tax exempt rates. If you issue pension obligation bonds, those are going to be taxable bonds. And like Eric and Rick both pointed out, we are at the lowest kind of taxable rates that we've seen in a really long time, uh, historical lows. And it's an opportune time people issuers are selling pension obligation bonds around the country. And uh it's uh the timing couldn't be better. There is some urgency associated with um what you're doing because you've got a lot of work left on your plate and you um you don't want to miss the market if, in fact, this is what the city wants to do. Uh, the city's credit rating you probably saw was lowered from a double A plus to double A in connection with the review of this bond and note issue that sold today. Um, I want to point out the strength of the double A credit. The negative outlook has been on the city's credit rating since uh since uh last, I think it was last um December, the negative outlook went on and then it was lowered uh now. Covid was a big part. The impact of Covid on the city's finances was a big part of the equation. Um, I've come before the city council a number of times in the past several years and we've talked about, we've talked about things that I don't think anybody really wants to hear, the idea of perhaps increasing the reserve position of the city. Um, that was brought up now because the reserves were hit some in connection with the Covid, the reduction in and uh and certain components of what influences the bottom line and some reserves were drawn down. Uh, that was a and that was something that uh influenced the rating agency in this still time of uncertainty associated with the pandemic that to lower the double A plus to double A. Um, I want to talk about the strength of double A. I mean, the city would have, as you can tell from the rates at which the city sold debt today, it sold right through the double A rating and then at least sold like a double A plus. Quincy's got a lot of name recognition. The factors aside from the reserve position that are amazing are the strong financial management of the city, the strong liquidity of the city, the very strong liquidity, the very strong economic situation in the city. Your tax base has grown five billion dollars in the last five years. You've got your unused levy capacity. While it's not the same as a cash reserve, it is viewed as um a real backstop. Now, the question is whether or not the city would be willing to draw on that and use it and to create structural balance at going forward as you face uh what if you don't do it with or without a P O B, face the um well, without a P O B, face the ascending cost of funding the unfunded pension liability. Uh, that's gonna put pressure on the city's budget. The idea with the P O B is to structure it so that it provides not only savings in terms of the cost of funding the unfunded liability, but also reduces and and um straightens out and corrects in a way that that ascending structure to something that's more manageable within the budget going forward. Um, that should at some point, when the P O B proves itself over time, which is how that works, serve to better serve to uh strengthen the credit and, you know, show the rating agency, look at what we've done here. We it's performed and we're now stronger and we're now better structurally balanced. And it's a very proactive, um, you know, the rating agency looks at your unfunded pension liability. They've been bringing it up for years, that and O P E B with no plan to address it. Pension obligation bond is an opportunity to address it, restructure how it gets paid and to make it so that it's manageable um uh going forward from the city's perspective. Um, this this, everyone that's issuing P O Bs probably wishes they were rated double A to get this deal done. The rating uh the rating does reflect the thinking that the city's gonna bring a P O B at some point, that it's exploring it and expects to bring a P O B to market at some point, probably soon. Um, and um, so I you know, I'm not sure that I have much more to add. The city is extremely strong. It can sell five hundred million dollars worth of debt uh easily in addition to what else it has in its capital plan because of the strength of the city and because of its tax base. Uh, the city is really seen as a powerhouse in terms of, you know, what it can accomplish with strong management. So, you know, I'm not sure if you have any other questions about the credit. I'm happy to, um, you know, I'm happy to weigh in more, but that's it in a nutshell.
No, thanks. Thanks, Cinder. Um, you know, it's a very positive outlook, as you said, which is a, it's a good place to be, but I'll I'll open it up to uh uh the counselors now, if if anyone has any questions for anyone uh that um that presented tonight. No, we're shy tonight. Chair recognizes President Liang.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I thank everybody for for their presentations tonight and I appreciate that we're we're starting this conversation. There's quite a bit that I personally still need to adjust to understand this fully, but I do have a couple of questions to start. Um, I'm sorry. So the first is, how did we get to the four hundred and seventy-five million? I just I was going through all the information that was provided to us um and even going through the presentation tonight, and maybe I'm just not finding the map. But if someone can help me to understand how we got to four seventy-five, that'd be a really helpful start for me.
Absolutely, Madam President. I'll be happy to address that. It's a combination of issues. Um, part of it is up until major pension reform in the late nineties, early two thousands and late early two thousands. Um, pensions weren't fully funded, so because of that, um, we were basically financing very similar to how a private corporation would match a 401 K or how a private corporation pays into FICA, we were matching the retirements of our um of our employees. And that was done through the under in uh under contributing to the pension system. Part of it is market performance, but I think one of the largest issues that's not talked about uh when it comes to pension obligation bonds, and I don't mean that for Quincy, I mean nationally, is the fact that these actuary tables were built on people living to be seventy-two, seventy-five, seventy-six, drawing on the pension for ten or fifteen years. It's now projected that twenty-five percent of Americans will live well into their nineties. Uh, forty percent of Americans will live into the mid-eighties. These are reflecting actuary tables. To give you an idea, a a citizen, uh, somebody, a citizen constituent working for the city who works his entire life uh and retires of a pension of um a pension of, say, forty-eight thousand dollars, which would be making sixty thousand dollars a year, which is the median income in the city. Um, them living, if you have a hundred, if you have ten of the ten people like that, living ten more years, that adds over three point six million dollars to the pension fund under and all that is a product of extended schedule. Now, you multiply it by the thousands of employees we've had over the over, you know, the several decades we've done this, that obligation grows fairly fast, Council. Um, so I would say it's a product of many things, but I personally, I think the actuary tables in the eighties and nineties projecting people to living living to be seventy-two, uh now people living to the eighties has really driven up that uh that unfunded liability.
Thank you, Eric. So theoretically, I understand that concept, but um I'm just looking again at the numbers itself and I just don't, I want to know under, I want to understand exactly where the four seventy-five came from, if that makes sense. Like, again, theoretically, I understand what it's paying for, right? I mean, it's, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, let's say, you know, you think that the lifespan of somebody, you're gonna need, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, but now they're living above and beyond that lifespan, so now it's two hundred thousand dollars. So that hundred thousand difference, right, is what equates to this four seventy-five. But again, in a practical sense, I want to understand how we got to four seventy-five.
So four seventy-five is the unfunded liability, which the U A L stands for unfunded actuary amortized liability, which is basically the amount of money, all those people we just described um who are unfunded into the contributions who are unfunded into the system, uh coupled with, you know, market returns that are below what was forecasted over those, you know, thirty, forty years of the fund. Um, and mixed with uh as cities develop and as cities stabilize, um, when we have inflation, inflation increases for salaries over time, that gets baked into it too. One of the most difficult, one of the biggest challenges that faces pension funds, especially relative to the unfunded liability, is that uh they don't tend to every if they mess up one year of that calculation, say, one year, people live a year longer. It's not like those individuals can go back and pay into the system. So that unfunded liability grows and it grows at seven point two five percent every year. It must be paid off similar to a mortgage amortized to meet with that twenty thirty-seven schedule. The way we get to the the four hundred and seventy-five that we're requesting in front of this body this evening is the summation of all those uh different scenarios. And then if you take that amount and what equals the U A L payment, if you just apply a seven point two five percent interest rate to like it's a loan, what those individual payments would be over time.
So, okay, so I'm just looking at um in the in one of the the documents I was given to us, it has um it's the Quincy Retirement System one, right? And then here it says that the net pension liability is at four hundred and thirty-five million. So I guess, again, to be even a little bit more specific, that's what I mean is where where am I missing the difference between here, where it says our net pension liability is at four thirty-five, two thirty-one, one twenty-three, to then the gap between that and the and the the amount that you're asking for.
Sorry, sorry, Counsel. I went a little bit around that that question. Um, yeah, so the difference is uh when we propose the authorization, we're gonna have to go through another series of actuary assessment. Um, I think that number will stay the exact same. We can only use however much we approve relative to the unfunded pension liability. If during this process we find out that it's four hundred and thirty-five million or four hundred and forty million, we don't get to use that extra thirty-five million. That is merely the cap. It's very similar to when we bonded an SBA project. We bond sixty million. If the project only comes in at fifty-five million, then we only bond fifty-five million. We don't have the authorization to climb higher than that.
Okay, no, and I remember I was talking about that when we were talking about bonding for the public safety headquarters. And it's proved up to a certain amount. That doesn't mean necessarily that we're bonding out for that amount, so I appreciate the clarification on that. Um, another question I have is when we're talking about the rate of return on the investments that we currently have in there right now, I understand part of that risk is that, you know, if our rate of return is not to be the extent that we think it is, that continues to add to the liability that we have, right? And so when we talk about interest rates being low right now and that allows us the opportunity, affords us the opportunity to be able to actually do this bond, are we also accounting for the fact that, you know, the investments and the return on those investments could be also low right now as well? Because those aren't fixed, right? Obviously, those continue to fluctuate also.
Yeah, absolutely, Counsel. So the stock market is going to increase. Uh, what the goal of this is that the stock market historically has increased far more than than three percent over time. And that difference between the two is where the savings becomes. So our asset composition right now, which will change with the introduction of these funds, uh just as any fund grows, the allocations change. Uh, it's geared um at the late at the last um financial statements for the retirement board at a seven percent increase, a seven point two five percent increase. And if that is what the market holds over time and we maintain a three percent increase and we maintain a stabilized three percent, that four percent difference will become savings over time. Um, retirement funds are usually structured with equities and fixed income, which do historically outperform uh municipal bonds. So we're using a asset class that grows a lot slower over time to pay for, to invest in an asset class that tends to grow much faster over time.
Right. Um, and then also speaking about the, um, earlier you were talking about the employees, you know, paying into this. I know that and I can't find it in front of me. I don't remember exactly what year it was, but I know that employees hired before a certain day. It was nineteen seventy-eight, is that right?
There.
Structure than employees hired thereafter, right? And there's, I think, multiple tiers at which that was happening. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe the last one was actually was actually twenty twelve. So an individual like myself who was hired in two thousand and fifteen, uh, I'm what they call fully funded pension because I they based on my uh pay schedule into the system, it's supposed to, by the time I retire, if uh I do earn a pension with the city, it would be my contributions and predicted rate of return would pay for what my withdrawal would be. Previous to, and again, this was done in several different legislative cycles over the last um twenty, thirty years. That was not the case.
All right. Is there any way that, um, I don't know where we could get that information or if it's in here, I'm missing it, but is there any way to get um a a list of um how many employees are paying at which level, just so that, again, it would be helpful for me just to understand um at which point we're going to have all the employees who are currently being paid through the pension paid up to date, if that makes sense, right? Like those that hadn't paid anything into it when they're gonna fall off, it would just be helpful for me to understand how much longer we're gonna be paying for that. Um, and then I just have one other question too right now that I can think of. Um, and then again, if there are more that come up, I'll be sure to ask them. But uh for Cinder specifically, uh, one of the things that has been really helpful for me over the years when you've come to, I mean, you've been presenting to us, you know, obviously, well before I've been on the council, but ever since you have presented, I've just, I've learned so much from you. You're such a wealth of information and knowledge and I appreciate every time you come and speak to us. I always feel like I learn so much more. Um, and one of the things that, you know, you taught me a long time ago that I always stick with now when we're talking about these kinds of things is our debt to budget ratio. Um, years ago, I remember when we first started having these conversations, I believe the debt to budget ratio that we were looking at to stay within was at, you know, maybe the high fives to the low to mid-sixes. Um, my understanding from previous conversations we've had recently is now that debt to budget ratio based off our financial plan can be anywhere up to, you know, the mid to high sixes to seven percent. So I guess this is a two-part question, right? Like, where is a a good range now for a debt to budget ratio? And then, I don't know if you would know this or maybe Eric would know this, uh, you know, if we were to move forward with this, where does that put the city as far as our percentage of debt to budget ratio?
Well, I don't think that there's a, I think, I think the P O B is different, so I don't think it counts towards your debt to budget ratio. It can't. And it's got its own offsetting. I mean, it definitely counts in terms of your debt metrics, but in some ways, but it's it it but it but then you have to consider it's funded your unfunded pension liability. So right now, your unfunded pension liability is a factor in evaluating your debt. And so if you eliminate your unfunded pension liability by issuing debt instead of it, you know, by issuing a bond, a fixed-rate bond, um, then that doesn't really, it's it's offset by the revenue stream coming in from the assets. I mean, the idea is that it's supposed to produce more than enough revenue to not only pay the debt service, but to produce so-called savings or a reduction in how much needs to be appropriated to pay debt service versus how much you would otherwise have to appropriate to pay off the unfunded pension liability as you go forward. So it doesn't really count. It's kind of like if you have water debt that has water rates supporting it, then it's self-supporting. A P O B ideally will be self-supporting. There's variations as you go through paying back the debt as to whether or not, like Eric was saying, if the whether or not you earned the assumed rate of return. There's asset smoothing, there's way to mitigate, there's ways to consider to mitigate risk. It's not a, it's not a slam dunk. There's no guarantee here, but if you can borrow at three percent and invest at seven and a quarter percent, the opportunity is that differential between the two to reduce your costs. So that's the opportunity. It 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 may not work out in some years, but it may work out. I mean, the idea is that that's what that the assumption is that that's how your system assets will perform through the life of the bonds. And that's that's the assumption about the assumed rate of return that your actuarial valuation is based off of right now. So if that's not real, then it should be, you know, then you're gonna have a higher level. If you only earn six percent, you're gonna have more liability that gets created during the life of it. But if you earn six percent, you're still three percent, it's three hundred percent. During the life of it. But if you earn six percent, you're still three percent, it's three hundred percent over. The three percent borrowing rate on the debt service, you'd still experience savings. It's a question of from year to year, are there savings every single year or how do you manage that? And that's what this the city is evaluating, how to manage it, but not whether or not. Is a good idea to do it because the opportunity is there right now for. For those municipalities that are proactive and trying to take advantage of this opportunity, if rates go back up, I mean, with this, the idea of a pension obligation bond has existed for the last forty some years. It used to be that you could do it on a tax exempt basis. And when all the tax laws changed in nineteen eighty six. They the federal government made it so that you couldn't do it on a tax exempt basis anymore. It had to be done on a taxable basis and taxable rates at the time. As you can tell from Eric's chart, were much higher. It's not, it's been since then that they've come down the way they have been the last couple of years and issuers around the country. I mean, it used to be that there were basically about a handful of pension obligation bonds around the country. We've now got only a handful of states that haven't done it. You haven't seen it a lot in Massachusetts because it's it's very restrictive. It has to go through a lot of approval levels. You need special legislation to do it. You need, you know, the you need to. So that you saw from Rick's presentation, the handful of communities that authorize legislation. But aren't necessarily pursuing it right now for one reason or another, only primarily because. You know, it's complicated. It's a lot to take on. You need the kind of people, the kind of management that's willing to. Get proactive about it. And as but you do see that there are a couple of other municipalities that are going at it as fast as they can go at it. And that includes Andover and Brockton. And down in Providence and now in, you know, California, there's hundreds of issuers doing pension obligation bonds. In a lot of other states, there's lots of issuers that are doing it where the laws are much less restrictive about being able to. Just go ahead and issue bonds like you do for, you know, for a for a park improvement. Or or, you know, something else that you issue your regular capital for. So I would say that in terms of the metric question you asked. All of your regular capital improvements still fall into that. And the issue isn't, you know, if you it it's different for each community, you have to have something that you can afford to pay back. It's just like any loan. Is when you sell a bond, you have to see how it fits into your. Into your budget structure. If you have to draw in reserves in order to pay back the debt, that's not really a good way to, uh you know, that 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 would not be viewed favorably. But if in fact you can afford it because your. You know, your revenue support that. And with the amount of growth that Quincy has been experiencing. You've got a lot of capacity to take on debt and right now. The opportunity is there for anybody who's trying the same thing with tax exempt debt, try to take advantage of rates there because. You know, those are also at historic lows. You know, to borrow twenty five year debt at under two percent like you did today, one seventy seven is unbelievable. You know, if if the if you wait, you know, if you wait four years to do that, you know, you might instead be looking at four percent. You know, for twenty five year debt. We used to think that was good for twenty five year debt and uh. You know, this is unheard of and it and and it's not expected to last. Uh but we've said that before, but you know, we're saying it again. So.
So Cindy, it's just to understand, so it it doesn't. If we were to move forward with this bond, then because it offsets the unfunded pension liability that we currently have on the books as debt. You're just replacing this. You're placing you're replacing one debt with another, not adding one on top of it. So it's not changing. Our overall debt to budget ratio. Is that what you're saying?
Basically changing a soft debt for fixed rate debt. It's fixed. You can't change it that easily. Once you issue the prob. You can't change how it's structured, whereas with the unfunded amortization of the unfunded liability right now. Did you know you can smooth it out if there's a, oh, you know, there's there's ways to smooth it out over every year when you look at up updating. How you have to amortize it. But um. The so you're 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 swapping it out for a lower cost, a higher cost for a lower cost is basically the bottom line. It's not, it's 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 not a guarantee. It's going to prove itself over time. And it has to be managed over time too. I mean, you've got to manage the investment side of this. That's a that's a, you know, there's no, you can't lock in the investment returns. But the assumption that went into calculating the unfunded liability assumed you'd earn seven and a quarter percent. If you earn six percent, then this then the opportunity is less. If you earn five percent, it's less than that. But anything that you earn on average over three percent through the life of the pension obligation bond, three percent being the rate at which you could potentially borrow it right now. Is savings versus what you would have otherwise. And if it's structured to have be a level payment like a mortgage payment. Then it's more manageable going into the future with regard to. The higher cost for other things and the other things that you've got on your plate, including O P E V.
So what's the what's the range? Do you know the range that it has been um previously in the past? You said right now it's at um seven and a quarter? And that's when interest rates aren't great, right? As far as investments go, like if I wanted to invest in, you know, put things into a C D or a savings account, investments are pretty low right now as far as the interest rates go. So. Um you said as long as we stay above the three percent.
Well, it's not invested in things like CDs and it's not invested in.
You know, in general, right? Like it it any sort of of those kinds of um investments right now are yielding a lower interest rate, right? So. Is seven and a quarter low right now? Is, you know, are we gonna be able to see that go up over time or is that?
Well, I'm not an investment advisor and I'm not an economist, but I think that most economists are thinking that. You know, that that. It's not unreasonable necessarily to assume seven and a quarter. Some of the rating agencies are liking to see less. I mean, if you was make an assumption that you're only going to earn six percent. Then your unfunded pension liability and the amount you should be bonding right now will increase because you would earn less. So. If the city did was assuming seven and a half and it's lowered its assumption to seven and a quarter. And that's that's why part of the amount that needs to get funded to bring it fully funded. Is higher than what you've looked at in the past because the assumed rate of return has been lowered. That will increase. If you're not going to earn as much, then you're going to create a more unfunded liability, which is. Which on paper is how what was evaluated in connection with this discussion. And where the city's at right now at looking at how much it needs to fund the amount of the unfunded liability. If that makes sense.
It does. It does. Again, every time you explain something, it's a lot clearer once I hear from you. So thank you, Cinder. I appreciate it. Eric, the last thing I would just ask from you is. Um I appreciate the verbal explanation of how you got to the four seventy five, but if you can provide a breakdown. Um and share that out with us, that would be helpful for me to just track what it was explained here tonight. So thank you. Thank you again, Cinder. Thanks, Eric. Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, President Liang. Uh the chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Chairman McCarthy. Um. So. I've heard or I've heard a lot this evening and I'd like to ask um again, so just to simplify things because. Um when we're dealing with our folks and they see the big number that is being thrown out there. We need to really, really make sure that we can put this in the most. The most easiest form in order for the for the taxpayers of the city to understand what's going on and not. You know, worry about what 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 is being presented. I'd like to ask, uh what's the comparison of the risk? Of what we do now compared to. This new move. So if we don't do anything, right? We don't do anything. Well, and what's the difference between if we move to it? What's the basically the bottom line?
Counsel, uh it I'll address that one. It's. If we don't do anything, we're looking at over seven hundred twenty million dollars in uh non. In a non funded pension liability payments going into twenty thirty seven. And we're looking at that increasing. For about four million dollars every single year and stacking. Versus a stabilized debt payment that will probably result in about nine, conservatively nine point two million dollars. Lower than what that number would be in F Y twenty one. And when that's compared to what the what the pension payment would have been. It it does add up to dozens of millions over over the life. But to put it in a, I I to put in a. I'd say a more close to home example. Right now, the I'd say the best way to describe our pension system is like having an adjustable rate mortgage. Where you're kind of at the ones, you're way more at the whims of the market. You have a balloon payment at the end of it and you have an uncertain debt future. Versus this is like a thirty year mortgage. You know how much you're gonna pay, you know how much you're gonna pay every year. And there's no way for that to change unless, you know, we enact some sort of callable feature or we choose to refinance. That it it the most direct way is to look at it like refinancing debt for on a mortgage. It's gonna lower your payment because it's a lower interest rate and it's gonna stabilize that over time.
So so um. Uh obviously, you can see the tremendous savings for the pension process and the taxpayer, obviously. Can you speak more though about the taxpayer savings? Again, make it quite clear what the folks. So the message is clear of what is being presented tonight.
Absolutely. If we right, given our little less than two percent budget increase that was introduced last week. We were to go back and add on. The, you know, follow the current system and add it on. It would result in fourteen million more dollars that are gonna need to be raised this fall. And that equals roughly three hundred and fifty dollars to the taxpayer. Average single family home, fourteen dollars, it costs about twenty five dollars a P uh twenty five dollars on the average single family home. To raise a million dollars. So before you in the pondered budget that we see here, that that was introduced last week. It would represent more than three hundred and fifty dollar increase than what. Would be expected given the current budget. In every year, we could project around, you know, some depending on A and F's approval and timeline, several million dollars in savings. And every one of those millions is twenty five dollars lower the tax rate is than what it would have to be, given the. The costs incurred in the budget that year. So for the it it directly to the average single family taxpayer, this presents large savings that really can't be replicated by any other budget action we can do.
That's uh that's um that's something that that's very incredibly important and I I thank you uh. Thank you, Eric, as always. Um but um I'm gonna kind of turn it a little bit. Uh so. Uh our retirement board has duties. Obviously, uh when it when it comes to this process and um. I'd like to have them talk about um uh the structure of the. As this is changing, the the as as the structure of the board as it's changing because. This this has to have some effect, cause and effect with this. So if I could. Hear from the the retirement board folks. Can I, are they on um Chairman McCarthy?
No, uh I don't think we have, you know, retirement board folks. And I think the question, Bill, it sounded like. What does this, what does the board do in regards to this?
Exactly, exactly.
I don't know if Eric or or Rick could chime in on that. I know they probably will oversee the. The investment, the whole, the whole bond and but Eric, maybe you can add to that.
Absolutely. Um it from a procedural, that's it, from a procedural standpoint. Once we have this approval, if the body so chooses to approve it, uh we have to go to A and F. And this they will work with what our proposed guidelines are. We'll certainly have, I believe there will certainly be discussions for retirement board relative to that. But A and F will lay a heavy hand on how those funds are directed and whether or not the plan. Is appropriate for Quincy's asset class that we're currently in. Uh so it it's both the retirement board and administrative and finance, the secretary of administrative finance at the state level.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Um and sorry about the the confusion. Um so. Um I'm hearing I'm hearing good things for the taxpayers of of Quincy over the period of time and and of and um. And with that, I'm just gonna say thank you, Chairman McCarthy, and uh. I think I have the answers I needed to have answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Uh Chair recognizes Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you, um Chair McCarthy. Um thank you, everybody, for the presentation. And if you bear with me for one second, I I um I have notes everywhere. So. I wanted to start with some of the presentation package that was sent to us, um separate from the presentation that was provided to us tonight. Um if I could. Um and and one of the questions that I just had. Was, um you know, we have Quincy contributor, the the retirement system, looks like the financial statements that were supplied to us from December thirty first, twenty nineteen. I was just curious why this is a draft and why we don't have a final document. It seems odd that we were having a draft here. Um so if we could, if we could get the final document and then also if there was a management letter that went with this. Um as well, just so we can have the breakdown of that. So. Don't know if you have any answer for that, Mr. Mason, but it's a draft that was sent to us. And then also, what was the accounting firm? Pardon me?
I'll reach out to the retirement board and I'll discuss with them.
Yeah, and there the other thing is is um because in this draft, what we have here, there's no accounting firm that's mentioned. And I'm assuming there isn't an accounting firm that's mentioned. It's basically just a C P A. Um certified public accountants from Ranger, Massachusetts. So it would just be helpful if we could have, if we could have that as well. And then, you know, I do think that um one of the other questions that was raised by um earlier by Counselor Counsel Liang. I did have the same question in regards to the four hundred and seventy five million dollars, the costs associated with the bond. Um is there any underwriting fees, commissions? How does the um insurer, the city pay for these costs? Like when we when we actually bond this out, you know, you know, what are what are some of the things that go along with that? Are they charged directly to the pension directly? You know, the net out of the bond sale, those types of things. And um just particularly, how is it if if these items are charged to the city or if they're charged to the pension, um the the retirement system?
Would you like me to address that question or do you have a formal response?
Um you can give me a formal. I'd like a formal response to this as well, because I think it would be, I think it's helpful for everybody. But if you would like to respond to me directly, that's too, that's great as well. I think it's helpful.
So traditionally, and I said, Eric, I mean, feel free to to jump in here, but uh the function of premium values for when we issue debt, basically the. Coupon rate compared to the market rate creates a premium, it's called. And that's the. Amount of money that the issuer is going to pay above base value relative to whatever that coupon rate is. That overages by state law, by state law and also federal law. It's actually about house orders too. It's used to pay down these costs.
Yeah, it all of the costs associated with putting this deal together would be in built into the. Issue itself.
Okay.
So there'd be no other costs other than what is paid out of the issue when it happens.
Understandable. And you know, just because this is, this is slightly different, Mr. Mason, um in regards to the fact that when we're doing municipal bonds, typically they're. Tax exempt and this is um this is this is going to be taxable, correct? I just, I guess if you could also explain to me, and this is just for my own self understanding, but I'm sure that there are some people home that would like to know too. What are the advantages or disadvantages of a city? Um, you know, taking out a tax, you know, as opposed to not, you know, no exempt bond versus a taxable bond if there are any.
Yeah, so to first address the first point is I, again, Cindy can feel free to correct me, is this is no different than any other bond we've done. Uh these are municipal general obligation bonds, municipal go bonds. Uh they are taxable. We have issued taxable debt many times in the past. Um the advantages are it's it's lower because similar to our constituents at home, or I'm sure many people on this call have a flexible spending account. Um so you have pre tax income that is used for medical expenses or you have a four one K which uses. Pre tax income. So you you maintain a higher rate of return over time. That's the advantages of non taxable notes. They have many different requirements and they are. Um some interesting issues with them, you know, like arbitrage, holding the money too long. Um the advantages of a taxable note is we would do this non taxable if we if we had the option, but that's simply not allowed. I believe federal law doesn't allow that anymore.
Right. Okay, thank you. And and again, everything that I'm asking, if we could get that in writing to all of us as well, just because I think it's an important, this is a very big um bond that we're taking out, has huge impacts. And it's just important that we have is, you know, we we document as much as we can in regards. And I appreciate Counsel McCarthy that. We're not going to be voting on this tonight because I do think there's a lot of questions that are at hand. Um then going back to the retirement system financial statements. And on page eight, there's an administration cost of five hundred and seven thousand. You don't have to answer this now, but if we could get those, you know, what those costs represent and then a breakdown of what they are. Um and then also where they get charged to. Are they charged the pension for these costs? It's how does the, I guess I'm just looking to understand a little bit more of the foundation issues with um Quincy Retirement Board.
All all the costs that one that are charged through time board, they're separate entity.
Okay, but I still would like to see what the five hundred. Yep. And then also on page, I think it's on page eight of the investment expenses. There's an expense of one million dollars, four hundred, six forty nine. Again, I'm just looking to see a breakout of what that is and to have a little understanding of what that is if we could. Okay?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then there was um, now this is where my packages are gonna get kind of messed up. I I I know that there was a breakout. Um with regards to um. I think it was for the four hundred nine where they break out, might be in the might be in the draft. Um they break out basically the um. break out, might be in the, might be in the draft. Um, they break out basically the, um, the Quincy College. So I think it's in the Stone Consulting Gatsby statement in the Parrot Letter, where Stone reports on page 24, um, the Quincy College, the 5.3 of unfunded pension liability. And as well as, um, I think there's also their, they, they have the Quincy Housing Authority broken out. So you have the 5.3 of undefended pensions for, um, Quincy College, and then you have Quincy Housing Authority, 3.7 for 15.179. It was not done, I don't believe it was done, um, for the 2020. Um, if we could get that breakout as well.
Absolutely, Counsel.
And then also, I know that, um, we just had the Quincy College, we reviewed the Quincy College, and I believe that Quincy College paid their 2018, 2019. Um, one of that with me, and I apologize, because I'm not, I'm not at my house tonight. I am not, to guest at somebody else's house tonight. So if, um, I think, I think they paid the 2018, 2019. And I think the 2020, they had not paid because, um, I believe it was because they, they got the bill late or something, something to that effect from the Quincy Retirement Board, and then they had to have their auditors look at it. So I just want to know whether or not that has been paid and, and how we rectify that going forward. And there's a secondary question, and I'm not sure why this is either. I noticed that in the package that you sent us, that the Quincy Housing Authority actually pays their bills monthly, and Quincy College pays theirs annually. I guess I was just curious to know why, why one is set up monthly and why one is set up annually.
Uh, I, I can confirm with the retirement board and with the, well, our internal external auditor on that. I do know the Quincy Housing Authority is created under different legislations technically, like a state entity, it's not a Quincy entity, though the employees are part of the system. So I need clarification, there might be two different governing legislations from a financial standpoint on that.
So I'm sorry, because they're part of the state?
Yes, the Quincy Housing Authority was founded under, uh, special legislation guidelines, separate from.
So they may have to just do it monthly, is that what you're telling me, as opposed to the annual function of Quincy College?
Yeah, I'm speculating on that, but if you want to address it.
Okay. If you could, that would be, that would be fantastic, because, um, I was just, I was just wondering, because it just seemed like one, it seemed more efficient. They pay theirs monthly, and they seem to be on time, and they don't seem to have, um, you know, they, they, they don't seem to have like, the, the Quincy College, basically, it seems to have a delay, and they say it's a delay because they're not getting the bill. But yet, you know, the Quincy Housing Authority has, gets their estimates and pays. And I was just curious to know if there's a way we could maybe adjust that. So, um, so that's, that's the package, I think. That's, that's everything I had in the package that I had questions for. Um, and then I do have questions to the presentation, but, um, one of the things that I had in regards to, this was actually, there was one other thing that I wanted to check, um, if you bear with me. Um, so for the presentation, if, um, so one of the things that was interesting to me in the presentation was, um, I know that you said, you kind of were going through, and I apologize, but now I have to go through my notes, because then I take notes of what you presented. So you were talking about the savings, the 7.5 will be nominal cost. And could you explain that 7.5 to me again, um, the $7.5 million?
Yeah, I'm actually, if it's okay with the body, I'm gonna bring up the presentation, just so people at home can reference it too.
Yeah.
In, uh, Is this what you're referring to, Counselor?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, just to be clear, it's, it's normal cost, not nominal. So normal cost.
That's a, I, I, I was, I was taking notes quickly when you were saying.
And that's fine. The only reason I make the clarification is, uh, we talked about like net present value, long-term inflation effects. We have nominal real costs. Uh, so for clarification, these are normal costs. And, uh, normal cost has a, a few different categories that fall underneath it. Uh, early retirement incentive is included in normal cost. So that's when it has authorization, lets a lot of people to retire early. Um, other things included in normal cost is when we have individuals who work for the city who say only contribute 8% to their pension, that difference year over year would be included in normal cost. That is the vast majority of normal cost. Um, there's some administrative costs that are included on top of that. Uh, it's, it's an, an accounting term that really dictates normal means current year, whether it's optional, uh, uh, operational or procedural, or expenses incurred within that period of time. So in this case, that would be for FY '22, what they, we are told are normal costs.
Yeah. And then the $9.5 million, the anticip, is the anticipated first year on the debt service payment. And that's based off of the 30-year bond? Is that what that's based off of?
That's based off the 30-year bond, and, uh, Cinder could probably weigh in this more accurately. Um, regardless of term, whether it's 30, 20, or equal to the current UAL schedule, the first year is gonna have a substantially lower debt payment.
Okay. And then if it's a longer term, so I guess I'm trying to understand the longer-term benefit versus the shorter-term benefit. So if it's a longer term, is it less per year as opposed to if it's a, okay. So, um, and then one of the questions I had was in your large packet that you, the packet that you sent out, I noticed that when you did the payout notes, I think you kind of stopped in your 2037. Is that because that's when it's supposed to be fully funded, or?
Yes, correct. And that's required by state law.
Okay. And we think that that's gonna be extended, right? But we don't know how long?
I would not speculate with that. It's, it's been extended a few times. I don't know if there's an appetite to continue to extend it. But again, that's a state decision, so I don't want to speculate.
Yeah. I think the administration was speculating on that. They were basically guaranteeing that it was going to, um, it's, it's gonna be extended. Um, one of the other questions I had was, you know, I think, I think Counsel Harris was, um, was basically saying this, no, understanding the issuing a 30-year bond versus annual funding for the city budget. I think you explained that in regards to that if we, you know, if we were to not fund this, that it would be, we would have to come up with $38 million. And I think you were saying it's $350 per homeowner, correct? Something like that?
The, the math on it was, if it's, if we have to increase the budget 14 million more dollars to reflect not doing this obligation bond, 25 times 14 is 350.
So with the 7.5, 9.5, and the 5.5, what is the savings for the taxpayers then? I mean, I mean, because they're not going, in the budget itself, we're not seeing, they're not gonna actually see a savings. This, this is a, it's a different kind of saving. It's not gonna be a savings that actually hits their pocket, correct?
It would reduce how much it would increase.
Every, right, it would reduce how much it would increase. But, but, you know, when we saying how much we're saving, I just want to make sure that we, that we, that it also opens. And there's another benefit to the, the city is that it kind of, and I think it's in your presentation, I don't remember.
It's the last bullet points on the current slide.
Pardon me?
It's the last bullet point on the current slide, Counselor.
Okay. Sorry. Um, so I know that's the last bullet, that's not the one, that's not what I'm questioning. I'm questioning, I think in your presentation, I'm not sure where it says, but kind, I think it was when, I'm sorry, I think, is it, I, I don't know your, your counterpart is, it's the first time I've seen him tonight, Mr. Ko, is it?
Koosh.
Koosh. I think, I think he was explaining that, where he was saying that it's going to potentially open up services for our constituents to better serve our constituents, and potentially even, um, open up potential opportunities for appropriations, something to that, to that matter?
Yeah, I think that's, it's slide, um, uh, there you go. Yeah, I mean, basically, what, if, if your budgetary, um, you, you have more flexibility in your fin, in your, um, in your budget appropriation. So, um, if you're, obviously, if you're not having to address $32 million in appropriations each year, or 30, 32 million dollars, you're gonna have more leeway into what, where to appropriate that money, as opposed to going directly to the pension.
Correct. So it's gonna open, open up the, it's gonna open up the, kind of, to, lack of a better term, to open up your wallet to be able to spend more potentially on projects and different things around the city, because we'll be able to potentially, if we, um, if we prove that the 475 is being invested correctly, and, and, um, because if it's not invested correctly, it could actually hurt our opportunity to bond. Is that not correct? I think Cinder kind of mentioned that.
If it was substantially lower than 3% return.
Right. Mm-hmm. So, so the anticipation is that, you know, we'll be able to invest, it will open up our opportunities to spend more potentially in the city of Quincy, um, on other projects, because we're not being locked in. So spending is, uh, one of the benefits of this is that it opens the doors for more, more spending, correct?
What, just, good, uh, I would say, no, it doesn't, this is not tied to any future appropriation. This is merely addressing.
Well, it's not tied to any, it's not tied to any future appropriation right now. But if we, if we did not, if we were not able to bond $475 million, we would, you were saying that we'd have a $14 million increase in our budget, so we would have to either tax more or cut. So, and then, in this particular case, we're, we're, they're not giving taxes dollars back to the taxpayers, but we're gonna be able to open up our ability to potentially bond more. That's what you just said.
It creates a reduced budget than what would have had to be created.
And that reduced budget against our debt association would open up the six, the five and a half to six and a half percent to be able to bond more, if we, if it was to be put in front of us. I'm not saying it is, Mr. Mason, I'm saying that it does open that door.
I, I do want to say that, as Cinder addressed earlier, that the, this isn't tied to that six to seven and a half percent, because this is a live.
No, I, I, I understand it's not tied. The $9.5 million is definitely not tied to the six or seven percent. What I'm saying is by taking this obligation off and making it, um, and being able to not spend $38 million, we'll be able to potentially, um, potentially spend more, because we don't have $38 million a year going up every four, every four million dollars every year, because we'll have a fixed rate. And it depends on what comes to course, Mr. Mason.
What potential? That, that is, that is an option. I mean, it reduces the.
That's, yeah. Well, that's what, I think your, your counter just said that. So I'm just making sure that people understand at home that, you know, this is one of the benefits, is that, you know, we'll be able to spend more, um, is one of the benefits. And, and we don't have a problem spending. That's what we certainly don't. So one of the other questions that I had is, so 435, I believe that's, the actuary came back with $435 million. And we, you know, when we first started having these discussions in the, um, in the newspapers, it started with 400 million. And then, and I think it got introduced maybe back in February, March, between February, March, and it's May, it went from 400 million to 450 million to 475 million. And this is the first information that we're seeing on it. And then in the package that you sent us with all the backup, it was 435 million, which is, you know, 30 million dollars more. And you said it was because you are predicting that people live longer. Is that correct?
Uh, no, I think that's a agglomeration of a couple terms. Um, so what's hap, what this, like I mentioned earlier, that we can only spend, we only use whatever the appropriation is, that is equal to what the pension obligation is. Similar to MSBA, we approve 60 million, it's a $55 million building, we don't bond the extra 5 million. Uh, the reason the number, and again, there's only one council order in front of this body, and it's been 47 million.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the conversations in the newspaper. So on the page, this is, this is a question that was raised to me. You know, why did it start at 400 million, then went to 450, now it's 475? And I had no answer for people for that. And then I got the package, and in the package, it's, the actuary is saying 435, and now we're at 475. So I guess, I don't mean to, I mean, I, I understand you went through this with Counsel Yang, I guess. I'm just trying to explain to you, these are questions that are being posed to us. And I, I think, you know, you made an explanation that people are living longer, and that the actuary is, that you, you presented in this package came, you know, it was 435. So I guess I'm just trying to understand the difference.
Okay. We'll try to address that, Counselor. The, uh, it's because when we, when this is introduced, we had, we were going through like any, our retirement boards at the same time, an actuary, an actuation, an actuality, uh, reassessment to see.
The hard word.
Yeah, actuaries. Um, we, to, you know, see how much the actuary report is, and what the unfunded liability is. What we're going through. I mean, these are large numbers, and this shifted four to six percent, as we were trying to come to the exact number for this. And that's the action of the retirement board, and that's the action of independent CPAs.
Yep. So it's still, it's still a large shift. So, and I guess, I have another question, and this would be, um, to Ms. Miss Cinder McMartin, if I could. Hi, Cinder.
Hi.
So thank you very much for all the time you spent with me on the telephone, because we have been talking quite, I think, frequently about things. And, um, at the time, we spoke.
We've been over by the hour, Ian.
We've, well, it's okay. You know what? I, I think it's important that we, um, we have these conversations. I like to let people know I do talk to people. I know Mr. McCarthy likes to give me phone numbers. So, um, could you give me an understanding of, um, you had a comment earlier, and I think it referred around, um, important in managing pension funds, and what happens if the fund underperforms from the 7.5 assumed rate of return. So if you could repeat that, I mean, I know it's, it's, it's hard, because it's, but it's just important that, I, I didn't quite catch what you said, so.
Uh, well, with the pension obligation bond, it's, there's two sides to the equation. Half of it is the rate at which you can borrow, and then you've got all this money that you borrowed, the bond proceeds, then you have to manage investing it.
Right.
And the assumption underlying your actuarial valuation, uh, there's many assumptions underlying the actuarial valuation report. Um, but the biggest, one of the biggest ones is the rate at which you can invest all that money, the rate of the return on your investments. And right now, that is, I think that actuarial valuation report assumes you earn seven and a quarter percent. If you earn less than that, over the life of the 30-year bond, let's say, then you're gonna, then the difference between what you earn and the rate at which you borrow the pension obligation bond, it's less of a differential. So it's less potential opportunities to reduce how much you have to, you, you save versus what we're talking about now. I mean, if there's a save, if there's a so-called assumption about what the difference is now, if the rate of return isn't seven and a quarter, then it's not gonna be quite as big a difference. Um, and, and so that's, that's, if you earn six percent instead of seven and a quarter, you're gonna, you will end up creating new unfunded pension liability at the same time as you're paying back your pension obligation bond. And you won't earn as much opportunity to save money. But, but the real, I think the thing to keep in mind is the difference between the borrowing rate right now for pension obligation bonds versus the assumed rate of, the assumed, what, what Eric was saying, assumed cost of not doing a problem, which is that you're, is the seven and a quarter percent. That difference, okay?
I, I, so I, I understand. So I, I just wanted, so the reason why I'm bringing that up is that it really comes down to the key. So borrowing the money is, you know, at a lower rate, I understood what Mr. Mason was saying, you know, we have the historically low rates, and I think you were saying it as well, um, Cinder. Borrowing at a historic rate is an opportunity for the city. But then the foundation, um, problem, the, the structural problem that we have with the Quincy City Retirement Board, is that they had, and this is not me saying this, this is, I'm strictly going off of what the administration was saying when they were discussing this. And in the administration's discussing of it was that they're, they're doing poorly, they're not making the returns, we're not getting the investments we want, we're ready to see a D or an F, you know, that, you know, we, and we also have, um, I think it was from Powers and Sullivan, the last four years, they, they had audit, auditory issues that they, they were marked up on, and they did not fix them every single year. So we had, you know, we had potential structural problems with Quincy Retirement Board. And I believe the, the idea is that we're gonna borrow this money, and we're going to invest it, and we're gonna be out of the unfunded liability, because we're gonna fund the money upfront, and we're gonna invest it. And we're gonna bring in, and, and I guess this would be Mr. Mason, we're gonna bring in, I'm assuming, because it said, um, I think it said that it's the CFO, so that would, Mr. Mason would be one of the checks and balances to the investment arm of this, and one other person. Who's the other person? Do we know who that is yet? Let's give you a recommend.
I defer, I would defer to Mr. Walker on the exact, uh, language, but it's somebody from the, uh, private sector investment experience.
Do we know who that is, Mr. Walker?
We do not. We would not make that determination until the legislation is approved.
Okay. So, but, but that is part of the struct, that's part of what this is. So we, we right now have about $409 million that the retirement board is investing. And if this is approved, $475 million, it will bring us up somewhere to $860 million. That will be the responsibility of five plus two people. Is that correct? Is that, am I assuming this correctly? That we'll be managing this? Anybody?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. From a technical standpoint, Counsel, yes, that is correct. But as I mentioned in the, in the intro, um, this whole process comes with a very clear understanding, uh, between the city administration and the retirement board, that there needs to be active engagement between the two parties. Um, for quite some time, uh, the independent, the, as I ignored it earlier, the retirement board is an independent authority, is not a city department.
I understand that, yep.
But based upon the investment that the city's gonna be making upfront, as opposed to the annual appropriation, as we're doing it right now, based upon that upfront appropriation, the mayor has had multiple discussions with the board members. The mayor has a direct appointee, uh, under the state law to the retirement board now.
Who is the mayor's direct report, who's the mayor's direct appointee right now?
It is Michael McFarland. So there is a, a very clear understanding that this is going to be a partnership to some degree relative to this process moving forward, because the concern Relative to this process moving forward, because the concerns are very well placed, that look. If the city's going to make this investment upfront, four hundred and seventy-five million dollars, there needs to be a greater role. In terms of how that money is invested, how that money is overseen, and how that process moves forward. I, I, I think that that is absolutely a valid point, and something that we're very, very cognizant of, and it's part of the reason, it's, it's the reason. Uh, why we filed the secondary piece of special legislation. Um, we could have, under, um, normal circumstances, just gone forward based upon the O six special legislation. But the mayor thought, uh, it was that important, based upon level of investment, that we add two members. Uh, one, the designee of the city's municipal finance director, and another with a specific background. In investment banking or the financial services sector, to help that process move forward, but, but barring that. Um, there's going to be active involvement from the administration in partnership with the retirement board.
And there's not active participation from the administration, even though we're investing thirty-two million dollars last year, and, you know, multiple millions of dollars to this. So there hasn't been, you know, we just, we just fund that, and we say, oh, they're underperforming, it's not, it's. How do other towns, I guess this is my question to you, um, Mr. Walker, is other towns have, you know, managed to figure this out. We've been a C or a D for a, a D or an F for a long time, and I'm questioning, you know, we, we've had this problem for a long time. And now we're going to solve it by bonding out four hundred and seventy-five million dollars and adding two people to the board, one of which is Mr. Mason. And I have to, I really want to stress this, it's, it's, it has nothing, this is not a personality issue, because it could be any, any administration, everybody has this problem. I understand this, this is not, this is not a, you know, Quincy problem, it is a problem that everybody's having. And then I also look, when I see that it's going to be the chief financial officer being the person who's going to be the direct kind of liaison to be able.
Designee of the chief financial officer, counselor.
Designee, okay, but my concern is, is that's also a very big job managing the city, and, and then managing a pension fund. On top of it is, um, is huge, and a, uh, eight hun- almost nine hundred million dollar pension fund, it's very concerning to me because if you. If you underperform, and the other thing that we're talking about is, you know, I think Mr. Mason said, um, you know, we're at historic low interest rates. And, you know, inflation is going to go up, well, inflation goes up, it's very typical that the markets go down, it's kind of, they go, kind of go. It's economics one-on-one, they go up and down kind of together, so I, I do get concerned, because as we, as that happens, it gets harder to meet that mark. And I don't, would hate to see that happen, because it is the very challenge that we have when talking about this thing. Right now, we're performing at seven and a half, or seven and a quarter, but if the markets were to shift, we could have a couple of bad years. Well, a couple of bad years at nine hundred million dollars, even one percent is nine million dollars loss. And then we're headed into, we could be headed into a, a situation that we, that I think Worcester were headed into, when they did this. I believe Worcester had some problems with their, um, their unfunded pension up bond, that they took, that they took the bond out, I think they, they had some. They hit some pretty bad times with that, so it's definitely a huge concern if not, if not managed correctly. And I understand that you're saying it's going to be managed correctly, I'm just concerned about that, it, it does make me worry, because, um. What seems like a great idea sometimes can be, um, can be a tricky thing to do, so I'm just wanting to get that out there. If I could though, could I go back, I'd like to ask, um, as well, Mr., hmm, I'm so sorry, because it's, it's. Kosher, how do you say, Kosher, so I, I do, I do apologize. I missed, I know that they said your background was in finance, is that correct? Um, are you, were you a portfolio manager?
I was not a portfolio manager, no. I, um, I worked for Eaton Vance, which is a financial services firm, a fixed income shop in Boston, I worked. Um, as a, as a product specialist, um, financial service professional. Um, on the institutional side, so basically, client base are those. Endowments, foundations, corporate plans, public plans.
How long did you do that for?
I bet I was in the industry for over twenty years.
You're in the industry for over twenty, and how long you, how long did you do the, um, asset managed part of it?
Probably at least fif- uh, three quarters of it, three quarters of it, maybe, uh, about fifteen years.
Cause I, no offense, but I was just, I did quickly look you up on LinkedIn, it seems like you were, you, you did a lot of marketing, you were institutional marketing manager. You were, and I'm not trying to be a jerk here, but I'm, I'm in marketing as well for finances, and I would never, at all, just want everybody to know. I'm not a financial investor, I wouldn't want to be in charge of nine hundred million dollars, I would be very hesitant to be. The person that's going to tell you that this is the right thing to do, I could certainly do the presentation part of it, but then I would turn around and look. Who is going to actually do the investment, and right now, the, the, um.
Portfolio manager makes.
Retirement board right now has had McKeeter as their advisor for, I think, the last twenty years, and. I do think that one of the things that happens is people get very complacent with what they're doing, and maybe the advisory part is not happening, and they, they, they. It gets a little lazy, so I do get concerned by that, and that's what I'm worried about, is four hundred and seventy-five million dollars being bonded. And the idea that, you know, who is the professionals that are going to be advising us to be able to make sure we're hitting our marks, so thank you.
To speak upon who would be advising, under the legislation, we're not running the retirement, uh, fund.
I understand that.
So we'd be investment decision, decision makers. To.
Yeah, I know, but.
Upon that, inflation and asset growth actually are direct. So as you can see, this is from the Federal Reserve, as inflation climbs usually assets, or they're non-correlated, they're non-verse.
Again, I'm going to do this again, is, 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 is I, as I'm going to say, we have structural problems in the way things are being invested. The administration has made it very clear that the Quincy Retirement Board are not making their mark. Mr. McFarland is a representative from the city that's on the retirement board. They have underperformed, and, and we have big problems, this is me, I'm paraphrasing, but what has been said by this administration. The solution to our budget, because it takes off, it takes off a giant, you know, a giant expense to us in the city of Quincy. Thirty-two million dollars last year, thirty-six million dollars this year, if we were to put it there, is to bond, bond out four hundred and seventy-five million dollars. To our retirement board to fully fund our pensions. The problem still exists that we have some real issues within our pension, our Quincy City pension, that we haven't addressed. Um, you know, in the credit report issued by the, um, Standard and Poor's, it basically tells us that. Um, the city pensions, um, determined contribution to be built in as a weak assumption in their methodologies. Um, they believe are at risk for unexpected, um, contributions and escalations, you know. This is a report that you can, you can go and, you can go and look up, you can look at the, um, you can look at the Sullivan, Sullivan and Powers report. The management report that was done on the whole city in twenty nineteen, we don't have twenty-twenty's yet. Which de- definitely points out some structural problems of reporting from the Quincy Pension Retirement Board. And now we're going to bond close to nine hundred million dollars, and we're going to put it in the hands of seven people to make decisions. Now, I would say that the best opportunity for us to be able to be successful in this is to put it in the hands of people who are professionals, who know how to do this. And take it out of the hands of people who are, you know, for lack of a better term. You know, when, when you look at Peric, they have, they have Prim that does it, and they've done it very successfully for a lot of people within the state of Massachusetts. Um, and not all of them are taking out, are, are taking out pension obligation bonds, but they are taking their pensions that they are, they are investing. And they're putting it in the hands of professionals that are going to be able to look at that, to asset manage it, to make sure that they're managing the ups and downs of a market and getting the return. And then you can manage them, but I mean, the way I understand how this works, it's, it's a little unnerving to me, and, um. It's unnerving to me because if we are not successful, and that is one of the key slides that you said. And if you look up pension implication bonds, they tell you to be very careful about this, because if you're not successful, it will come back, and it will create. Another second unfunded liability, which will fall on the taxpayers, now will it happen, you know, in the next ten years, probably not. Would it happen in the next fifteen or twenty years, maybe, and maybe none of us will be here to discuss it, but there'll be other people who will have to actually. You know, deal with it, and I don't want to see that happen to the city of Quincy, so I think this is a much bigger conversation, I know we're not voting on this tonight. But to use this as, um, in this opportunity, to suggest that, without these other things being looked at, and, and knowing coming into the conversation. This administration has said that it's underperforming, the investment side of this is underperforming. To then say bonding it is the solution, it's concerning to me, it's just, you, the, the addressing of the issues of what's happening is not being done. So if those two things happen at the same time, or if we said, let's fix how we're investing it and see the success of this. And I realize it's the interest level that you're looking at, um, Eric, but if we're saying, let's look at the interest, let's look at the interest of, of. Of an exercise, let's fix the problems within the, the structural problems and the investment issues that we're having within the pension, the Quincy Retirement Board. And then, once we see a successful track record of that, now we can safely bond and be able to fully fund. Our investments, because we have a, we have a track record of being, you know. Yes, but right now, it's just, it's very concerning to me, because adding two people aren't necessarily going to solve the problem. And we were, and, and I'm sorry, but we were, we were led to believe, um, at the beginning of the conversation, that this is a person who has had investment. Experience because he was at Eaton Vance and a lot of other places, but, you know, he's a, he was a marketing manager, so let's be, let's be clear of what we're talking about. And now he's in the finance department.
That's a generalization, counselor, and I. So, so, Counselor, do you, do you know what, do you know what McKeeter does?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I think this, I, I think I'm going to jump in, Mrs. Mahoney, I think I got, we got your point, I want to, I want to move it along to other counselors that have been waiting, um. I, uh.
Anytime you'd like to call me, Mr. Cross, I'd be happy to explain to you.
Okay. Thanks, Mrs. Mahoney. Chair recognizes Counselor Antronico.
I'm Counselor Mahoney, thanks.
Thank you, Chairman McCarthy, uh, I appreciate it, and I just want to say thank you to, uh, Mr. Mason, Mr. Kosha, and the administration for putting together a presentation tonight, tonight. And of course, all the legwork that goes into, uh, putting together a proposal like this, uh, so that, uh, we can review it and have a conversation. Uh, the first thing I wanted to bring up, uh, I had a conversation earlier today, uh, with Mr. Mason, and I was hoping you could just, uh, continue that a little bit. Um, but you know, I noticed in that, in the presentation, that other towns had put forward a partial, uh, liability bond. And I was hoping we could talk a little bit more about, um, what the difference is between just covering a partial liability. As opposed to a full liability, and the benefits, uh, that stem from doing that.
Absolutely, Counselor, and, uh, you know, it was a, certainly a, a very good type of conversation we had earlier. Um, so the difference is, um, usually it's a product of a poor interest rate environment. Um, it also has to do with, so if you have a lower rating, if you don't have the double A, it may not be advantageous given your interest rate. Given the fact that, uh, when we look at inflation, it does, it does cover, uh, asset markets, and it does move positively because it's the movement of prices. What that shows is that if you're in a market analysis, especially if your, if your, uh, actuary is saying, hey, you know, these markets are pretty hype, they're pretty, or they're pretty, um. The market tight, that can be very difficult, and so a community may choose to reduce risk by only doing partial. And it's important, it's important as we discuss, Counselor, is that the, you express risk, you, it's risks expressed in interest, it's, it's as simple as it is. So in situations where partials are done, they may not have as severe a credit rating to actually engage in this, it's usually why a partial is done.
And I just wanted to double check that the budget that we were given and will be debating, uh, further next week. Uh, presumes that the council passes, uh, this four hundred and seventy-five million dollar bond. And that that bond is also presumed to be over a thirty-year term.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I can answer the first part of that, uh, the budget as presented by the mayor, the budget proposal. Uh, does in fact incorporate this plan into it. Um, if the body sees fit not to endorse this plan, um, it's a fairly. Simple fix to go back and reappropriate that additional fourteen million dollars to the, to the budget. I, I would, uh, turn it over to Mr. Mason on the second part of that question.
Yeah, so, um, Counselor, all the facts and figures shown in this presentation are for thirty-year notes, uh, thirty-year bonds. Um, but the, some of the material that was given, uh, to the council last week does also ponder the twenty-year in the equal term.
Right, thank you for that, I just wanted to, to make sure everyone was on the same page of, and the public was as well, uh, for that. And that kind of leads me into my next question here, and, you know, one of the benefits to that has been talked about a lot, is the stability. That this bond would have over a thirty-year period, right, every single year, you'd know what you would need to pay, and then every year, because of that. Uh, you know, taxpayers would see a lower, uh, annual rate, and, Mr. Mason, I, I'm not sure if we can go to. Uh, the slide that goes over the interest paid comparison, um. That reviews, you know, a twenty-year bond, a thirty-year bond, uh, and then the, I believe it's the equiterm, uh, bond as well. But when we look at different bond rates, we say, okay, this is a savings for taxpayers. Um, you know, it's kind of the same way that if you go and you get a loan for your car, right, you say, okay, I, I want to pay. Two hundred dollars a month, uh, for a car payment, and you can do that with a few different ways, how to have, uh, you know, a little bit of a higher. Uh, monthly payment, let's say you do a four-year term, or you could extend that out, uh, instead, maybe you're a little too high, and you, you go over maybe. Five years or six years instead, um, you know, your monthly payment is lower, but overall, you're still paying more in interest. Right, so it, it, it really depends on when we're talking about savings, who is the savings for, and what's the length of the term itself. And just looking up here, and thank you again for putting a slide up, you know, let's say you had a three percent, uh, three percent bond. And you had a thirty-year bond, you, you're paying two hundred and fifty-two million, where, uh, as opposed to a twenty-year bond. I believe you're looking at a hundred and sixty-three million, I mean, that's, that's ninety million dollars. When we talk about savings, I mean, we spend ninety million on the last phase of the public safety complex. I know it's been brought up early, but when we talk about savings, I, I'd prefer to look at the entire picture. Um, and, and look at it that way, and one of the questions I had, Mr. Mason, uh, was if, let's say it was a twenty-year bond. What would that annual payment be for the city of Quincy? We saw on the other graph, it showed the thirty-year payment is somewhere between twenty-two to twenty-six million dollars a year. Which is substantially lower, uh, than the projections up through twenty thirty-seven. But if it was a twenty-year bond, what would that look like for us, what would our annual commitment need to be in a twenty-year bond?
I'm going to bring that up right now, Counselor, can everybody, there should be an Excel spreadsheet called Schedule Comparisons. Um, so in a, if, Counselor, can you see that?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so this is for a twenty-year bond, and this is expressed uniformly, and these are the different interest rates. Um, so at it, we're, we're, you know, probably somewhere in the two and a half, three percent, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, the stabilized debt value would be about thirty million dollars, so it'd still be, it would be still less than what we were projecting paid this year.
Okay, and it would still be less, um, overall.
Yes.
I, I don't really have a follow-up question to that, you know, I'm, I think we're, we're still working through. What might make the most sense for, for the city of Quincy, is it do nothing, is it do a thirty-year, a twenty-year, or, um, an equiterm bond? And, or maybe do a partial bond, um, you know, but it's, it's a lot of money, uh, to look at, I understand. That we need to pay this back by twenty thirty-seven, um, you know, whether that's through a bond or through an annual appropriation, that, that's a variable rate every year. Um, I understand it's, it's a complex decision, and I just want to say thank you again for, uh, for taking the time to answer our questions tonight.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I like that I, I yield thing, you should do that, that must be a Senate thing you picked up in the State Senate, I like that. Um, uh, Mr. Mason. Um, I had a couple of questions, uh, but I wanted to, to just address something first. The position of capital asset manager, how long has that existed?
Um, I believe it's about a year.
Okay, and how long, um, how long has it been filled?
Um, probably about the same time.
Okay.
Maybe a little, maybe a little less, it was mostly a product of, with COVID coming on, the asset markets became very. Very time-consuming to, to understand, to move through.
Sure, and so was that in the last municipal budget, that position?
No.
Okay, so can you explain to me, perhaps this is a better question for Mr. Walker, how it is that a position that wasn't in the budget just gets created? I, I mean, I don't recall seeing an ordinance that came out.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, my, my recollection is this was funded, uh, originally through either diff or COVID-related, uh, relief money. Which is acceptable under the law, the city has, uh, the ability to hire. Uh, based upon needs at the time relative to the relief money, um, there's a couple of items in this year's budget, uh, that reflect that. Um, the part-time nurse, uh, in the health department was hired, uh. During COVID, uh, using federal monies, um, that is being placed in the budget. Um, the position as it stands in this budget, um, is, is neutral because it essentially replaces. And Eric, jump in here if I'm, if I'm wrong, if I'm misremembering, because it essentially replaces Mr. Mason's former position. Um, just alternating in, um. Um, just alternating in um different duties relative to some of the things that Eric was doing, Eric is going to continue to do. Uh, and Mr. Kosher is picking up an area that we felt was, was lacking. It is.
Okay. Um, and you're saying that an asset manager was hired using COVID money? Because it was a COVID need?
It was uh the CARES Act and subsequent ARPA money allows for pretty much any, if anything was, had an order of magnitude effect. The operations that were caused by the COVID pandemic. We were allowed, similar to uh Mr. Walker mentioned about the part-time nurse and about.
Oh, no, I get part-time nurse and, and the COVID pandemic. I'm just trying to, can someone explain to me why we hired an asset manager? In, in the middle of a pandemic with pandemic money?
The markets became incredibly unstable and difficult to manage. It, it takes a very specific eye on that all the time. It, I mean, we had a thirty-three percent contraction in GDP. What that does for a debt portfolio the size of Quincy. A one percent change and that can be four or five million dollars on the budget.
And that's changing how?
Uh, the change in Federal Reserve rate, the change in just legislation too.
Right, but isn't that, isn't that when we offered debt? That's not on our, our existing, right? That's when our debt's rolling into new issues, right?
So we go to market twice a year and we have substantial amount of bands. Our, our dip is that's ten, our ten. Uh, bands one after the other. And that's a pretty, and then on top of the uh school buildings we do. It is actually twice a year, we have substantial need to understand the market, you know, pretty sophisticated man.
All right, and when was the last time, the, the two times per year, when, when are those?
June, December.
June and December? Okay. All right. And I, I thought that that was the role that bond counsel played. I'm not bond counsel, that's, that bond advisors played.
That's, that's part of it, but um, so we, we can't be on the phone with Cinder every day and follow it every single day. They, they, they do have limitations similar to us.
If you're going out twice a year, why do you need to follow it every day?
Just change in market, change in plans. I mean, you make the decisions on how you buy based on what you think the market's going to be like when you actually have to borrow the money. Not.
Wouldn't you only have to call Cinder before you, before the June and December time that you're, you're. Sending out, you, you know, you're issuing the, the debt?
I would, and Cinder, I don't believe Cinder can weigh in on if we should do a deal, just what the ramifications of the deal would be. So having somebody who understands, who understands the market, who can give you an opinionated view on it is, does provide a substantial amount of ability to. Mitigate certain issues.
And so this is a full-time position? This isn't a consultancy that, a service that we're purchasing?
No, it's a full-time position. Similar to what Mr. Walker said, my previous roles, chief analyst and economist, right against CFO left a, left a gap.
All right, and what's the salary for this position?
I'm not sure, but Counselor, I can certainly get that back to you.
Chris, what's the salary for this position?
I think it might be in the budget for this year.
Give me one second, I can check it off.
I, I, I mean, just for the record here, I'll express my concern that we're using COVID money for an asset manager. I mean, I. This is one of those things that when, when you guys are making all these bonding requests, many of which I, I support. You know, I voted in favor of, but you know, that's one of these unintended consequences that now we have another, another staff member and. Can't help but, can't help but think about this in terms of the uh Director of Social Justice and Equity. Which is something the council voted on. We actually supported and you guys won't fund, but you'll fund jobs that you create. Just out of the blue and then put in the budget. Uh, that, how much is it, Mr. Walker?
Ninety-seven thousand.
Okay, and that includes health benefits, right, and pension?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, um, so. Uh, it, it's, uh, it's Kosher, Mr. Kosher, is that correct? Is he not with us?
It's Kosha, the counselor.
Kosher? Okay.
He's still having technical issues, Counselor, relative to unmuting and, and being on.
Okay, well, lucky him. Um, so, Mr. Walker, let me just say, um. I suspect you'll talk to him tomorrow about playing quizzes with the counselors and trying to, trying to one-up them and make them look foolish, right? Because I don't know, I don't know what McKeen is either. He can, if he wants to make someone look foolish, he can call me tomorrow and do it all day long. Um. And. I, I trust you do, I don't. He seemed pretty intent on trying to make you look foolish by saying you didn't. I don't, so have at it, but, Mr. Walker.
To be fair, to be fair, Counselor, and I, and I will speak to Mr. Kosher about that, but to be fair, um. In his first session with the city council, his professional integrity was sort of questioned.
And so, I, I'll let you.
Why don't we, why don't we just, Counselor Palmucci, can we just stay on the, on the subject tonight?
Yeah, I am. I, this guy.
We're kind of drifting away and going after somebody. I, I, we can talk about this. Uh, you know, you can discuss it with Mr. Walker or whatever you want to do. I feel like we're going to go off the rail here.
Uh, no, I mean, I, listen, I, it's nine-thirty, like I, I just wanted an opportunity to speak. I've been listening to everything that's said. I. To me, uh, I don't know this individual. He's never appeared before us before. He's offering an opinion as to what we should do. I think it makes perfect sense that we ask some questions about his background. I didn't even know we, we hired him. I didn't, he wasn't in the budget. That's what I use to figure out who's on the payroll. So I think it's reasonable to. For, for somebody to Google him, for someone to look on uh LinkedIn. I, I would like to know his. And I'm, I'm glad he was, he was able to express this through questioning from uh one of my colleagues, but I would like to know what his expertise is. If you're going to offer an opinion, there needs to be a foundation for it. So, um. I think it's perfectly within the realm of, of a proper questioning to ask what someone's, who's offering an opinion to the body's uh background is. Now, Mr. Um, uh, Mr. Mason. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Does the investment returns have to improve in order to realize the savings that we're talking about?
I, there's, it's a two-part answer to that question with uh Counselor. Um, if they, if they're above three percent. The damage to, or the increase that would have occurred to the unfunded liability will be lessened. Overall though, it, it does not perform at seven.
Can you start that over with? I'm already confused. I apologize. Can you start that over?
No, it, it, it's, it is.
They're, they're coming in at like seven percent return, right? Okay, and so do they need to go higher than seven percent in order to realize the savings?
No, um, that's because the actuary schedule is based on seven percent. So as long as they're at seven or higher. If they're higher, they'll overfund the pension. That, that's certainly an option. Let's see possibly by S and P. Um, but if it's, say it's six percent, uh, Cinder, I believe mentioned this earlier, so uh she can, uh, she wants to clarify after I say this. Is if it's at six percent, you, that difference of one percent, one point two five percent would cause an unfunded liability equal to that one point two five percent. But you would still get the asset growth from the nine hundred, eight hundred and sixty million at six percent. So it would be lessened than if it was just at, uh, if we did do the unfunded liability, because that unfunded liability. Is already at seven and a half, seven and a quarter percent. But, so it's already there. Uh, it would reduce.
So that, should that, so would that, the, the better the returns that they realize. Increase the savings? That's why there's this ban that you're saying savings, I think it was like thirty-eight to seventy-five million or something?
Correct, Counselor.
Okay, okay. Uh, and that, and so the baseline is where they're at?
Correct. And then it, uh.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if the body chooses to do a pension obligation bond, in terms of the unfunded liability, instead of being at seven point two five percent, it then drops down to three. But the schedule extends out longer if we successfully get it thirty percent, uh, thirty-year.
Okay, okay, I understand that. Um, so then would that mean that anything over three percent? Realizes savings? Is that what that means or no?
Yes, relative to if we didn't do it, because the previous balance of four hundred and thirty-five, thirty-eight million.
Can we just assume for a second? So I, I'm not talking about the, whether we do it versus whether we don't do it. Can we just assume we did it? And I'm trying to understand the, the pros, you know, the risks versus rewards. So let's just assume we did it. Um, this might even be. Assume we did it and say that their returns drop two percent to, from seven to five percent. What does that do to the savings that we're discussing tonight as a result of the bond?
There would still be some savings, it would also create an unfunded liability relative to that two percent.
A new unfunded liability that wouldn't have been covered by this pension, uh, by this bond, right? Okay. Okay, and so that's why part of the discussion is, I don't want to say reform, but improving the performance of the. Um, of that fund, right? Because we needed, we needed, we're covering, we're, we're backstopping the previous uh underperformance, if you will. And we're trying to prevent underperformance in the future, right? That's essentially the, the name of the game here.
Exactly, that economy, that's, it's two issues, but they, they merge with this discussion, Counselor.
Okay, and so if they, if they uh realize a return of, say, two percent more of nine percent. What happens then? The savings and that we realize from the bond increases, right? And then what happens with that, I guess that extra monies that would be generated?
So the pension would then be overfunded, um, which S and P would rate that as, as positive. They, well, the city would not receive, if it's over by two percent, the city would not receive, that would be if it's fully funded eighteen million dollars. The city would not get that back. But we would benefit from our, in our credit ratings and in assessments of the city. We would benefit because your pension's overfunded, means if there's a market downturn, the city.
Yeah, okay. Um. So it wouldn't impact the monies that we're paying from the municipal budget, right? Because those are going to be flat. So if their performance improves, our number stays the same. If their performance deteriorates further, then we're talking about uh additional monies that we would spend to backstop, right? Or just creating an unfunded liability.
Yes.
That at some point would need to be backstopped.
If it has, and there's a little bit of a sequencing issue with this, if they have like three years of plus five percent growth, but then they have a downturn of say six percent. We, this, it wouldn't create an unfunded liability.
Because it averages out.
Yeah, exactly. You're still above, above a hundred percent. So you don't create unfunded liability if you get below a hundred percent.
Oh, I was so close to being done. Uh, what do you mean a hundred percent?
Would we fund?
A hundred percent, oh, of funding, of funding. Oh, okay, all right, all right, good. But, oh, man, I always. I always don't want to ask that one last question that just completely confuses me and blows what I thought I understood out of the water. Um. So. Okay, can you just tell me the band again in terms of what the savings, possible savings we would realize? It was thirty-eight to, to seventy-six or something?
Yes, and, and uh, Counselor, if it's okay with uh the body, I can't bring up a schedule of this, if that would.
Sure.
Uh, Counselor, can you see the uh?
Yep.
All right, so this is pondering um a thirty-year note. And so we have, this one is looking at saving schedules, so this would be different forms of asset allocation. And if we look at the previous schedule I showed Counselor in Veronica, which is very similar, um, if we look at the thirty-year note. You're going to see the U A L L, that's the unfunded liability. Um, and then compared at different interest rates. So these savings, so say for example, if the body passes this, in twenty twenty-five, we would have owed. And this is if the retirement board performs at that seven point two five percent.
Level, yeah.
Yep. But if we went to market and got two, two and a half percent, that's a difference of about sixteen million, fifteen point seven million. So that would be the savings we would have, we would have had to increase the budget by. We would have increased by fifteen million because we did the pension obligation bond. We don't have to do that.
And that would have been from the general fund?
Correct, Counselor.
Okay, so when we're talking about saving, saving money, ultimately, we're talking about money that. Eventually comes from the general fund, which is the taxpayer, the property tax. You know, eighty percent, ninety percent made up by property tax. Um. And so when we realize the savings, it's not as if money's coming in, it's not the kind of savings where. You get a check, it's savings where you send a lower check than you otherwise would have, right?
Correct, it's similar to when you refi. You don't get to, you don't get a check back from the mortgage, where it's company, you just get that little benefit of not having to write as big a check.
Right, okay, okay. So I was a little bit confused when one of my colleagues was asking about spending more money. Because this has nothing to do with spending more money. Uh, like arguably, like that was just a. The same, say we realized the shoes that, what was it, twenty twenty-five? So twenty twenty-five, we realize a fifteen million dollar. Quote-unquote savings because we're not spending as much. Um, that, that doesn't necessarily be. That doesn't necessarily have to be spent on some building project or, or anything, right? I mean, that's. Arguably, I, I mean, the budget goes up every year just due to inflation alone, never mind anything else. Um, uh, fifteen million dollars could, at the discretion of the mayor and the city council. Be used, the, the, the additional fifteen million dollars that isn't being spent on the pension obligation could be used to offset. Uh, ratepayers, right, taxpayers, right? So depending on what. The mayor and city councilors in twenty twenty-five decide to do with the fifteen million in savings. It could either be lower taxes or a new school or fire truck or fire station, right?
Yes. There's no expense provision outside of the authorization here, Counselor.
Outside of the what?
The authorization to bar.
Oh, right, 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 okay. All right, I think that was it. Um, so I, you know, it's. At, at the end of the day, we're, we're refinancing, refinancing a debt that the city owes, no matter what, to a lower interest rate. And I, I guess I can appreciate that it's a large sum, a huge sum of money.
A large appropriation.
Yeah, um, so I get, I get that and, and I guess I get that it could be, um. It can, just that some alone can cause folks to be hesitant because you're playing with such, such a large, vast sums of money. But it doesn't change, you know, doesn't change the fundamental savings long-term. Right? I mean, whether it was four hundred million or four million, you're still going to realize the same percentage of savings. You know, the dollar amount's going to be smaller. Okay, all right, I, I, I feel like I, I understand that. I appreciate you, uh. I appreciate you taking the time. Um, let me see. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Thank you, uh, Counselor. Great questions. Uh, the Chair recognizes Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, lively discussion as always. What a wonderful evening, full moon vibes out there apparently. Um, so I, I certainly appreciate uh this concept. Uh, it's a unique way to save some money. Um, and I, I think I look at this a little bit differently than the rest of my colleagues. I look at this as a. You know, as we're sort of an investment manager and we need to make an investment management decision on behalf of the city. Um, and, and I feel that tonight I would have been uh better prepped. If I were provided with an investment memorandum, right? Um, here is. I'm looking for four hundred and seventy-five million dollars from you and, and here's what I'm going to do with it. Um, because I have no idea where anyone has intentions to put this in any part of the market or asset class. Um, I have no insight into the investment process of deployment, decision-making, management and oversight. Typical due diligence questions that you would go through to make such a sizable investment, uh, four hundred and seventy-five million. You know, more than doubling the size of the retirement fund. Um. Cinder, uh, do you know who Brian Whitworth is?
I do, I, I work with him.
Yeah, he's a colleague of yours. So he's out there, he talks a lot about um pension obligation. Bonds and, and sales and, you know, he's got, he's got very mixed opinions about them. Um, and it sounds like two different sides of your business, which are uh supportive yet conflicting. And it seems that he says that the, you know, the greatest risk to this is the lackluster investment. And it seems that he says that the, you know, the greatest risk to this is the lackluster investment returns that are seen in the uh, retirement funds themselves or the pension plans. And so, um, all I have tonight, uh, that I was given was a schedule of investment returns, unaudited uh, over the last six years that show a pretty uh, dismal record and very inconsistent across the board. Um, you know, there are some outlying years, you've got two thousand seventeen, you had a performance of twenty percent. But in two thousand eighteen, you got a performance of negative three point zero nine. Um, if you average those out, you got about six point seven six, uh, which is, which is interesting. Again, this is unaudited and I have no idea what's performing well, what's performing poorly. But I know that, uh, you know, due to the gains in the S and P and, and other indexes that we've been in one of the greatest, you know, bull markets that the country has ever seen. And so I'm just curious as to why the retirement fund hasn't also enjoyed uh, that investment appreciation that, that some others have. Um. So that's, you know, one thing. I'd love to know, and, and I do want to recognize that we have our own city auditor here who sits on uh, the retirement board. Uh, so I think there was some discussion earlier about no one being here, but Susan is here. Uh, and I, I know has uh, very good insight. I always appreciate Susan's uh, perspective here. Uh, you know, uh, financially speaking with, with uh, our city council decisions. And so I, I certainly would, you know, uh, love some insight from her as being a part of that body for some time now. Um, and that, I know that Makita came up and uh, if anyone's familiar with the investment management world, and there's kind of this, I know and you know, it's like, I know what this means, but yeah. So there's these, these middle people that uh, sort of make recommendations and decisions on behalf of retirement and pension plans, right? And um, you know, they do it for unions, they do it for retirement plans like ours. And it's a, it's a very interesting universe. Uh, they have their own uh, business and they've got their own, um, you know, agenda at the end of the day in terms of asset allocation. And so, you know, I, I'd love to know how that fits in because there are fee structures involved. And so when we're deploying, um, again, four hundred and seventy-five million dollars, which uh, takes a long time to invest. And I personally know nothing about that investment schedule and how it intends to be deployed into uh, capital, public, private markets. Uh, it's difficult to sort of, to make a decision on, on this because as uh, Brian Whitworth, Cinder's colleague at Hilltop Security says, that, you know, the risk here is in uh, the, the investment returns. And so if we're not making that threshold uh, return that would cover the costs and, you know, we're making sure, we, obviously, the risk here is that we create an additional pension liability that sure, residents won't see in uh, a certain period of time, we've fulfilled our uh, pension obligation liability, you know, by the twenty thirty, whatever. Uh, but there will be another liability being built, right? And so what are some clever ways that we can put aside some of those potential savings that Counselor Promucci just alluded to? Uh, that could allow us, and that's through good policymaking. And so, you know, I know that we've gone down paths in the, in the past to discuss, um, OPEB and other pension liability uh, policies and, and funding schedules. And so I'd, I'd love if, if we could revisit that in the next meeting as well. Uh, so that we could understand a little bit more about the commitment to stay on top of our, you know, day one accruing liabilities, right, uh, come fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, I'd also love if anyone could speak to, you know, this is a defined benefit plan, right? And do we have any thoughts to uh, change the model a bit? You know, this is, this is an historical, um, uh, benefit for uh, you know, government employees. Uh, this was a method that was utilized by corporations in the past, which uh, many went bust uh, because of the liabilities that they uh, were, were incurring uh, due to their obligations that they promised uh, due to long-scale tenures with, of employment. And so I, I would love it if we could, if we could take a look into a defined contribution and change this model. And obviously, it would be something that wouldn't affect people that are currently in the system, but for people that come in, the next person to come into the system, thinking forward that way. Um, the last, I think the last piece that I'd like to mention is around, um, you know, the risks for the residents. So yes, there will be, um, a continued, uh, you know, um, regular payment schedule going forward based on this bond and the interest rate that we'd be, um, issuing upon that. Um, but I still, I still can't, I can't get over that, you know, a-again, from the investment management perspective, that I, as a city counselor representing people who are floating this money to fund obligations that they didn't necessarily have anything to do with, they don't get anything really out of this. They might get a reduction potentially. Uh, I'd love to see a reduction in taxes. That would be a phenomenal thing to bring to residents coupled in this package right now. But I would love to see if there was an actual return, meaning I wish that the city or whoever it is could be party to this transaction, right? How does the city get involved in uh, the upside of any potential success that this investment or these investments make? So can we set, basically, it would be, can we be entitled to a carried interest, right? So at a, if we meet that threshold and we're able to cover uh, the uh, the debt service and we're able to cover the, the liabilities uh, through the retirement fund, uh, can we split the difference uh, on any uh, percentage rate of return over that? I think that's an interesting concept. You know, let's think it's like a, some sort of a permanent fund that could be created uh, on behalf of the residents of the city that can be used for X, Y, Z, but actually benefit uh, the people who are putting the risk on the line. Um, again, I think this is a very interesting concept and I, you know, it's, it's very much out of the box, but as I said, I, I certainly would have appreciated uh, more details around where's the money going? Because I know that uh, we're in a very precarious investment environment and um, I know that institutional investors are uh, searching high and low for yield or returns, right? And so uh, I want to know where either Makita or the decision-making of uh, the retirement board is putting that money and I guess over, over what period of time we'll be deploying that capital? Because if anybody's worked in money management before, they would know that four hundred and seventy-five million dollars is, is a lot of money to deploy uh, with, with a, you know, a crack team of, no offense, uh, to the retirement board, a, a crack team of the board and an executive director and maybe, you know, someone else in there. You know, there are huge teams of, um, similarly or dissimilarly qualified people uh, that do investment management. Um, and I'm sure that anyone in that industry can speak to that. So, you know, would, would just love to understand how that process is going to unfold. So, um, I don't know if anybody has any answers for me tonight. I just wanted to at least take the opportunity to make some comments on uh, the data that was provided to me this evening and um, you know, look forward to continuing the discussion. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Dabana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, good to hear from my colleagues tonight. Um, very feisty city council we have here and I like it. Um, you know, uh, just listening to my colleagues, listening to Cinder, good to see Cinder here. Um, first time on Zoom, I've seen you, we've always seen you in person over the years. Um, I think some of the biggest um, issues that I really have in general, um, this is kind of a solution to some of the issues that we have. Oh, there's a thunder out there. Um, but um, I think, I think what my biggest question is, and I think it'll be to Cinder, is is for our ability to bond down the road, our ability to bond two years, four years, six years, ten years down the road with the aggressive appropriations of funding of bonding over the last few months, I guess I could say. Um, I don't know if you're familiar, Cinder, we had a hundred and twenty million for the public safety headquarters, a hundred million for the roads and sidewalks. Um, the Quincy College did not go through, it was twenty-three million plus a hundred, would have been one twenty-three. Here we have four seventy-five uh, million. Um, my six years on the council, we've never had this much appropriation of funding for bonding, even, even proposa-, even given to the city council to vote on. Um, and I can remember back being on the school committee for two thousand and fifteen with our huge snowstorm, snowstorms, we had a hundred and eleven inches and we had to, I think it was around twelve million dollars for the, for, for the removal. And we broke it up into three years of three point eight million dollars per year, and then we got past that. And then it was like, okay, we have a little bit more room to do this. Let's do more capital, capital asset planning where we did, you know, a road package and, you know, um, uh, kinds of parks and parks and recreation, all these different things that we bonded, but it's never been this aggressive. I mean, this is, this is very aggressive on financial, um, money. I mean, just in front of us over the last few weeks, we've, we've had, um, I don't, I can add these numbers, five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred, probably around seven hundred million dollars just put right in front of us. And um, hey, listen, I know when we get up here, been up here long enough for six years, the special interest groups come on there and they, they're bartering for votes and all these other things. Um, and at the end of the day, um, some of these votes are good. Um, the public safety headquarters and the roads and sidewalks, hundred and twenty and a hundred million were good votes. But how many times can you go to the well for water until there's no more water left? Or you have to go to another well. Um, Cinder, this is for you. Do we have? And maybe this chills up with Eric Mason as well with the breakdown of our long-term debt and where our percentages are. Um, say this four seventy-five million dollars goes through, what is, what are we looking like in two years down the road? What are we looking like in four years down the road? Um, ten years down the road with our bonding, um, for the future. Um, I think that's geared towards Cinder.
One, one of the things about the pension obligation bond is that it takes the entire term of that bond to see what the experience is, to see how successful it was at at producing the opportunity and the, this, I'm gonna call it savings, but freeing up the appropriation requirements, um, that it was envisioned to do. And to smooth out the cost of funding the unfunded pension liability, if that gets smoothed out and the investment returns are what is estimated on average through the life of the bond, which is what is estimated right now with the actuary evaluation, then, um, you will have freed up money to support doing other things if in fact it's appropriated for those other things. And those other things have to be managed, whether it's capital, debt service to support capital, or whether or not it's to provide tax relief and not be taxed, or whether or not it's to support OPEB. You know, start funding that or to build reserves and, and to manage the situation. I mean, if, if, if the, I think that the rating agencies, and I'll just put it this way, they know about the debt the city's authorized. And in the rating that just was, just came out. You know, like, like I'm saying, Quincy has experienced tremendous growth in the last five years. The increase in the tax base is five billion dollars. You're got the capacity to do a lot of things. The rating agency is aware of the, that the city wants to maybe bring a prob, they're aware of the big hundred million dollar projects that you've talked about. They're, and, and, you know, it's not that they're gonna wait and see, but essentially they're saying that your stable credit, double A, so long as everything is managed and works out the way that it's anticipated. I mean, to the extent that it doesn't and reserves are drawn upon or, you know, you've create new unfunded pension liability, then that changes the dynamics. And that, you know, that's what, that the city would, has the option at that point to manage that. And if it manages it appropriately and conservatively, it can do everything it wants to do. I mean, it, it's up to the city to manage this through and through, you know, the next twenty, thirty years, depending upon how long the prob is. I mean, the fact that you're funding the unfunded pension liability doesn't mean that now you don't have all the debt to pay back. You have to pay back the debt. And the debt is going to be less than what funding the unfunded pension liability would be, but it's assuming you're gonna earn that return. So you're gonna have to, you know, it's, it's not a wait and see, but it's a, um, you know, you evaluate it and you vet it and you figure it all out. Then you do it if you want to and you manage it as you go forward. I mean, the investment side that was brought up is a very big component of, of what you're talking about in terms of the opportunity happening. So, uh, but again, if the, even if you're not, don't earn the seven in a, if you don't earn the seven in a quarter, um, if you earn over the rate at which you borrow, you'll have uh, levels of savings that there's opportunity in that. But you know, I think, I, and I, I I, I, I mean, I, what, what I'm hearing about the re- retirement system, I mean, that has to be dealt with in the process of doing the, this prob. I mean, you have to have an investment plan that, that you feel like you can rely on. Um, that's a big part of it. I'm not an investment advisor. That's not what I do. So you need an expert in that.
And thank you, thank you for elaborating that information. The, the concern of mine that I have is, yeah, we can save money today or we can save money next year in our budget, but then it opens up the doorway for more, more spending on one other end. So opening up new positions and this, and oh, we got a, we got this two, three million dollar savings now and now we can spend it somewhere else. And the next thing you know, it's like, it's like you say, uh, you have to manage it over that, that time period, that twenty-year time period. Um, does, does the market, can the market
Managing all of that, you're, you're managing all of that now. For the past twenty years, that's been what the city's been doing. You know, with all the, with all of the, you know, with the, you've, you've got other things besides the problem. I mean, you've, you've been successful with the development district and producing a tremendous capacity of unused levy. I mean, you know, the city hasn't levied, it's got this, uh, and it doesn't necessarily want to. And part of the question is, is will, will it be willing to? But you've got capacity to do a lot. The rating was affirmed that the double A stable, uh, based on knowing everything. But again, you know, the, it is, it's complicated. You're taking on, you're taking on a lot. You have to manage it expertly, but you've got strong financial management.
I, I appreciate that. Um, getting over to Eric Mason, if I could. What is our, do you have a, like, the last five years of basically our long-term debt percentages? I know a few years ago, and I, I want to say three years ago, we're right around five percent. Um, what are we at right now? What are we projected for next year? What are we, what are we previously? Do you, do you have a breakdown of those five years?
Yeah, I can't, I don't have that available, but in my slew of different files I keep off my computer, but I can, I can absolutely get that for you. We're currently
That would, that would be very important to, to know because I know a few years ago, we were in a, in a serious driver's seat and I was looking at, and I remember you guys coming in and asking for appropriations for capital plans and we said, well, we're at five percent long-term debt. I, I could, I want to see where we're kind of at now. Are we, do you have an idea where we're at now? Are we at seven?
We're, we're about, um, about six point two, six point three percent. Uh, I'll, I'll give you the full schedule. We're, we're right in the median of our range, but we do have after twenty twenty-five a pretty substantial decline. And we'll be falling around four percent around FY twenty twenty-seven. It's important, it counts.
That, that, wait a minute, hold on, hold on, Eric. That's anticipating that you don't bond again. Now, remember, when you put, put these graphs up, that means there's no bonding going to be happening. You're always going to come back here and bond. I mean, let's be realistic. I mean, the five-year plan, the five or six-year plan for the roads and sidewalks, you're gonna have to come back at some point for more funding for that. Is that correct? So when you say, yeah, it's gonna drop to four percent, that's basing it off of, no, we're not gonna bond again. When there's no bonding. Let's be realistic, every year I've gotten appropriations of some type of bonding for something. So when you put those graphs up, it's kind of skewed, Eric. Um, and it, it just doesn't
Just to clarify that point, um, one of the ways those, uh, those charts work, and I, I've been, I tend to, I like to be upfront and direct with the council. It's that I only ponder in those charts, I only show what's currently in front of the city council, what it can improve. I, I don't like to speculate going forward, and with all due respect, it's because, you know, this, this
Stick around for six years, Eric, you'll see. The, the concern that I have, Eric, is, is, is not necessarily this particular appropriations. It's a huge amount, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five million, but it's, it's, it's a solution to an issue that we have here in the city of Quincy. So not so concerned with that. I'm concerned with the future. I'm concerned with down the road with appropriations of these big fundings coming through, especially if, if every budget cycle comes If every budget cycle comes out and all of a sudden you see a savings from this type of pension, uh, you know, four hundred and seventy-five million. And the next thing you know, you're, 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 you're just, you know, putting in so much stuff into the budget. And it's like, okay, there's only so much we can handle. And that's my concern is the future. And as a city councillor, I'm, I'm, I'm fiscally conservative. I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you, Eric. I'm just a fiscal conservative. I look at the benefits, kind of with Mr. Counselor Kane, so what's the benefits to the taxpayers? What's the benefits to the citizens of the city? Is this economically correct to do at the time? Is the timing correctly? And. How do you anticipate the future? And, you know, I just don't have a crystal ball of what's gonna happen in the future. And, you know, um. You know, I wish, Cinder, can I take you with me out to do the debates when we have to do our debates and door knock and all that other stuff? Cause. You, you were, I mean, you, you, you put it in a nutshell, but it's, when you get to the doorway, they don't want to hear that. We have good double A plus rating and everything's great and you have a lot of excess levy capacity and. Um, you know, after this COVID, um, situation, a lot of folks have been struggling out there. I've talked to a lot of folks, especially during the Quincy College vote. And they talked about, listen, we're going through some tough times. Um, this particular thing, and I'll stick to this, Counselor McCarthy, I mean, Chairman McCarthy is. The four hundred and seventy-five million is a solution to an issue that we have here in Quincy. It's not a major, major concern yet, but it's, it's some of the other appropriations of funding for certain things that. May not be a return on something for a solution that we have, or, or, or an issue that we have. Um. But, you know, we have more discussion about this and maybe you can come back to me, Eric, on, um, some of those, those percentages. It would be very important for me. And, you know, I, I'm trying to just be open-minded and listen to my colleagues, listen to, um, what is, what is given to us. Um, and, and, and I'm glad we're not voting on this tonight so we can, you know, kind of like, you know, digest it. Get a little intake from the public, get a little intake from, from some of the specialists, um, as Cinder said, some of those people that. Have expertise in the exact field. Um, there was one graph that I did really like that, um. I think it was the other guy that was on here, um, about all the other towns and cities that are, that have been doing this bond that, um. And what the amounts that they've been doing and when they've been doing them. It's, it's, it's good to see that, but, um. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, yeah, that is right there. Um, that was really important to see that other towns and cities are doing this. So. Um, if you look at it, uh, Brookline, I look at Hingham, it's close to us. Um, some of these are cities. Um, you know, Brockton's obviously a city, um, you know, Chelsea. So there's, so there's some cities in here that are doing this, Springfield, Worcester. Um, I kind of need to see this because I, I didn't know, and I asked this question previously. On which other towns and cities are doing this. And, uh, I talked, talked to the mayor about this and he said, we'll give you a graph, but thank you for this. Um, these are all my answers, uh, questions for tonight. Gonna digest this, listen to my colleagues a little bit more and, um. Hopefully come to a conclusion about the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Debonna. And, uh, yeah, it's after ten, it's late. Um. I'm gonna wrap it up, uh, just a couple of comments. First of all, all great questions and it is. Another monumental move. I think it's a very positive move. Um. I know that, um, it has to be managed correctly. It has to be managed strongly. Uh, but, um. I think those are the things the administration is looking at with, with a move like this. Great, great points by everybody. Uh, I want to thank Cinder. Uh, for being here and hanging in there, Cinder, for the last three hours or so and, uh, Rick and Eric. And what I'll do is, um. Try to put together another meeting, uh, and we got some time to talk more about this, answer some of the questions. Get some of the information back that, uh, Counselor Kane asked for as best they can do, uh, and, um. And go from there, but, um, uh, a very good meeting, uh, very positive meeting and, uh. With that, I will make a, uh, motion to adjourn tonight at, uh, ten sixteen PM and I will be. In touch with everybody soon on a, on another meeting and, uh, see if we can, uh, wrap our arms around it. Thank you. Good night.